All right, we're ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. This is the City Council's work session. I'm calling this meeting to order and giving notice to the City Council and members of the public that at this meeting, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for discussion and consultation with our attorneys, which will not be open to the public about any item that's on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
The President.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. Please stand if you're able.
(Inaudible).
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd love to read the land acknowledgement. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to the indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacy, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up is open call to the public, which enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that the item is discussed. And open call to the public appears on the agenda twice. You have three minutes, and there's a clock here. And because whatever you're speaking to is not on the agenda, we can't answer questions or ask you questions. So first up, we have Scott Overton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott Overton, Public Works Director. I'm also serving as a project manager for the Montavo Project. And most of you are aware of this project and recall the Montavo STEM Center coming before you for approval. And I wanted to just make a quick public announcement that we have a Montavo Design Community Meeting to solicit some input from community members on the concept of the design and get some input on what might be incorporated into future design. And that meeting is on Thursday, May 29th, at 5:30 in the PM. It is open to the public, and we'll be hosting it at the Aquaplex. So Thursday, May 29th, at the Aquaplex. And all are welcome to come and learn more about the project and take feedback on what they might like to see in that project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Caputo.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Jennifer Caputo, Deputy Human Resources Director. And I'm here this afternoon to introduce a new member of the HR Risk Management Leadership Team, our new risk manager, Aaron Kaminski. And I'll let him say a few words.
Thank you. I'm excited to serve the City of Flagstaff as the risk manager. I grew up here, went to school, elementary, junior high and high school, and actually college as well. Last 11 years, been doing claims, contracts, risk management for one of the large universities in this town, and happy to be here.
Thank you. Dapper Dre.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, staff, council members. Good to be back. It's still Bike Month, so figure I'd come talk about bikes always, because that's always my main interest. And I guess general concepts of where we're at with how streets are used, run, funded, encouraged. You know, we always ask to share the road, or we're always looking at a sidewalk. And we see that most of our things are developed for cars. It's like even the Lone Tree Project, the Buell Around About, that's all level of service, right? That's what most people design for, is how do we get cars as fast as we can to where they need to be, and then how do we park them? And 95% of a vehicle's life and use is spent parked. So we take up 95% of our energy, 95% of our planning consideration. I'm sure that's a lot of planning dollars for engineers and what have you. And you're never going to build your way out of these congestion problems, right? I think everybody kind of speaks to that about Flagstaff, right? It's congestion, congestion. And then the other things I see when I come and people present is safety, right? Just last week, I was here and somebody had their two children come up and say, hey, it would be awesome if cars could slow down in our neighborhood because we would like to ride our bikes, because we would like to feel safe. And you think about every single other street and why it's dangerous, right? It's not because of parked cars, it's not because of pedestrians, certainly not because of bicyclists, but every street is dangerous because of cars. And yet, level of service is what we always do for cars, right? How do we get them there faster, faster, faster? So what are we doing to slow that down? What are we doing to redirect? Multi-modality is kind of the only thing we can do and make it safer. People don't want to walk or ride their bikes because it's dangerous, and they don't want to take the bus because it's time inefficient. I'm sure if any of you have been choosing alternative forms of transportation instead of a single-use car, you might notice that it's hard to get to a bus stop right out in front of City Hall on time to make it to your thing, because it's either 15 or 30 minutes, depending on what kind of service you're taking. So just a consideration for car centrism in this Bike Month, if we can get away from always planning to do something for the car, it allows us to think outside the box. And I know one of your clips will come up, and it'll say, part of your carbon neutrality plan is to get away from car dependence. I fully agree with the slides, and I hope everybody would start working towards that on the staff, on council, putting some dollars, not always into the consideration of how do we make it easiest for cars to get places and park, but sometimes how do we utilize stuff for pedestrians and cyclists, but most importantly pedestrians, because we shut down the street for Car Free First Friday, had overwhelming positive success. So if we could do that more often, that's innovation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving down to proclamations, and we will take them in this order. Ride Your Bike Week, Mental Health Awareness Month, Economic Development Week. And as we're reading each one, we'll ask anyone who's here on behalf of the item to come and join us at the edge of the dais.
Good to see everyone.
I don't know, you guys hang out with this guy?
Okay, I'm going to get started. Great to see everyone here for Ride Your Bike Week. And here is the proclamation. Whereas bicycling represents one of the most environmentally responsible, clean, efficient, economic, and healthy forms of transportation; and whereas the City of Flagstaff and Flagstaff Biking Organization recognize the importance of a bicycle-friendly community; and whereas Ride Your Bike Week raises public awareness about the need to improve bicycle infrastructure in the community to encourage more people to commute by bicycle; and whereas bicycling improves air quality, reduces greenhouse gas emissions, and supports Flagstaff's carbon neutrality goals; and whereas bicycling enhances mobility and helps manage traffic congestion; and whereas bicycling is an excellent low-impact aerobic activity that improves health and reduces stress; and whereas riding a bicycle helps all of us connect to our community and feel a sense of place. Now therefore, I, Vice Mayor Miranda Sweet, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 12th through the 18th, 2025, as Ride Your Bike Week in Flagstaff.
So tonight, our schedule of things is Bike to Dine Out. There are a few businesses that you can go get a discount at for riding your bike. Tomorrow is one of our big days. We have Bike to Breakfast. We have, I think, 14 stops, stations all through town, that you can go get some free breakfasts as you bike to work or bike to school. And it's Bike to School, no, Bike to School Day is Thursday. Thursdays. But Wednesday night is Ice Cream Social. It's at the Seacrest, ride starting at 4:00, 4:15. So bring your bike, bring your kiddos, go for a ride, it'll be great. We'll have free ice cream from Shamrock and Joy Cone Cones. And then Thursday is our Bike to School Day, and then Friday's Bike to Work Day, and Saturday is Bike to Shop. And then Sunday is Bike to Fun. We're going to be at the Farmer's Market, joining them for the first time this year, and so we're excited to be part of it. But always, thanks for the recognition. Come on. Oh, take the Bicycle Friendly Driver Course online, and if you finish it, you can come to the Farmer's Market and get a pair of free FBO socks. At FlagstaffBiking.org. All right, it is my honor to read the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is essential to overall well-being; and whereas one in four adults and one in five youth ages 13 to 18 experience mental health challenges; and whereas 60% of adults and 50% of youth do not receive the mental health treatment necessary due to limited knowledge of the need, barriers to care, or stigma, fear, and shame; and whereas adverse childhood experiences or ACEs, including physical, emotional, and sexual abuse or neglect, household dysfunction, untreated mental illness, untreated substance misuse, separation or incarceration of a household member, and domestic violence, are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and can result in poor physical and mental health through adulthood; and whereas creating safe and stable nurturing relationships and environments for all children prevent ACEs and help all children reach their full potential. And these relationships and environments are essential to creating positive childhood experiences. And whereas isolation, sickness, grief, home instability, change of routines, and community trauma have increased the need for mental health services; and whereas mental health or mental wellness leads to higher product, excuse me, whereas mental wellness leads to higher productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, and improved quality of life; and as the mayor, Becky Daggett, calls upon all city residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all individuals. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you, Ms. Carrick, for coming to our event Saturday. I'll rock for Wellness Event Saturday. Would you like to say a couple words? Economic Development Week is an opportunity to recognize, oh, let me wait for you all. Economic Development Week is an opportunity to recognize and thank everyone and all businesses that choose Flagstaff, the city of innovation, to be their home. Economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities and create, retain, and expand jobs that facilitate growth and a stable tax base. Economic development offers efforts in Flagstaff help to foster innovation, attract and retain businesses, support workforce development, and enhance infrastructure to meet the evolving needs of the community. The City of Flagstaff and its partners include business organizations, educational institutions, and local entrepreneurs. Work together to support sustainable growth and opportunities for all residents. Economic Development Week, created by the International Economic Development Council, is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the contributions of economic developers and their essential role in our local economy. Flagstaff is committed to fostering a vibrant, resilient, and inclusive economy that supports businesses of all sizes and strengthens the community's economic future. Quality Connections has been a community leader for over 25 years, empowering individuals with disabilities through job training, inclusive employment, and social enterprises like QC Office, while also driving northern Arizona's economy by employing over 200 staff, operating the state's only Ability One and state-set-aside printer supply business, managing a preschool that serves as a training site, and offering diverse support services and workforce partnerships. Now therefore, I, Becky Daggett, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2025, through May 17th, 2025, as Economic Development Week.
Thank you, Council, staff. My name is Armando Bernasconi. I'm the CEO of Quality Connections. I just want to thank our board for their support in allowing us to be creative. And most importantly, I want to thank our staff, who actually carry out our mission. Thank you all for being here. Thanks.
Next up, we have the review of the draft agenda for the May 20th, 2025 City Council meeting. Council, do you have any questions or comments about the agenda? All right, we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As is typically the case, the report is just an update on some things happening behind the scenes, and we have a couple of presentations or updates for you as well. In this report, I, are you going to scroll through this? That's very nice of you. Thank you. Touched upon work zone awareness, which is a very relevant and timely topic in Flagstaff. Some updates, some nice photos there, some updates from our fire department, as well as from water services. You'll be hearing in just a minute, you'll get an update from Water Services, Police, PROs, and Public Works. And we had the drop-off day, which was great, well-attended. Thank you to those who volunteered. Great event. Of course, many of you were at the United Way Annual Meeting not that long ago. It was wonderful, great keynote speaker there. And then some of you had a nice visit to the State House. Thank you, Joanne, for those photos. Any questions on this report? I, you know, I'm just kind of skimming over things, but if you have anything you want to call out for discussion, I'm at your pleasure.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. I just had a quick question. There was a section in the report that talked about the signs installed near the downtown railroad crossings, and I noted the ones that were emphasizing availability of help for mental health crises or suicidal ideation. And I was wondering, since it's, especially since it's Mental Health Awareness Month, if we've thought about any sort of enhanced public messaging through the city for those signs during this month and possibly in September, which is Recovery Month, to help with raising that awareness?
I don't know that we have thought about it, but I think it's an excellent suggestion, and I think we can run with that. So allow us to huddle, and very timely and thoughtful suggestion. Thank you. Yep.
That's it? It looks like?
We have, I guess, again, it's appropriate that we talk about work zone awareness. We're going to have an update from city engineering and capital projects, as well as an update from Water Services. Who's up first?
Looks like Paul's walking.
Yep, we've got our city engineer, Paul Moot, coming down to chat with you and give you some updates here. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Mayor is Paul Moot, I'm the city engineer, and we'll be giving you our update on, oops.
And we'll be giving you our update on city engineering. We're made up of three divisions. Capital Improvements, we have Trevor Henry, our capital engineer, is the head of that section. We have Transportation, Jeff Baumann will be talking, he's our head of that section, and our city traffic engineer. And Development Engineering, David Millis is our development engineer, but he's in Tucson, so I'll be covering development engineering for David tonight. We're going to kick off with capital improvements, but you have seen a lot of capital of improvements at the council retreat, the budget. So we're not going to be project-specific focused, but some, kind of touch on some other key areas that we work on in capital projects. I'll turn it over to Trevor.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Trevor Henry, Capital Improvements Engineer. So as Paul mentioned already, you see us quite a bit with project updates, project reports, and even contract awards, so we're going to kind of put that to the side, and we'll talk a little bit about capital itself. So we have a staff of nine FTEs. So there's my position, there's two senior leads, three senior project managers, and three project managers. And so the picture there is off to the right is from our Inter Basin. We do, we try to do two times a year, get out and do some team building, do a lunch or some activities. So that was when we were up at Inter Basin, Site A. Some of the council members are familiar with this site, so we were up there for that day. And this picture was prior to Ivy Cost, who is a senior project manager, before she came on board. So she's missing from this picture. But just wanted to convey to you who we have, our team, you've seen them before, they've been before you, and they will continue to be before you with a lot of our projects. What we do also in capital is a lot of project outreach. So we do public websites. So our project managers with the higher-level projects will create with the team project websites, that information can be conveyed, and people can come and sign up, get emails, newsletters, and just be updated weekly. We also work with public information sites, relations, so we have firms that we hire as well to help us with what we do and get the information out. We also use the city social media. So we work with Sarah Langley on media releases, and we also work with her team to get these social media releases out to the public and out to those that need to see the information and want to see the information. So these are some sites here. We have Fourth Locket, that's the HSIP project, so that's a website that's there that they can go to and get information. We have the Spruce Wash off to the bottom left, and that is a site that, again, that information can be conveyed. So that's what we do in public outreach for capital.
Trevor, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Can the public go to the capital improvements portion of the city's website to find the individual project websites or signups for newsletters?
So the capital improvements website, typically, we try to get that information updated, but the actual websites that are created have better information, and you can get the actual links there more trustedly, I guess, than the capital site. Sometimes we're still lacking on trying to get our website up to date. We're getting staff completed or hired, so it's just a little harder for us to keep the capital site updated, but it's better to go to the actual websites for the projects.
And how would someone know the URL for the individual projects?
So we, whoever, let's see, so when we do updates and we do project updates, we to convey that website, the URL, and then they can go there to get signed up. Also, we can convey information from phone numbers on our website, the Capital Improvement Staff Directory. They can call directly to those sites and get information for projects. All right. Another thing we do in capital improvements is project delivery. So again, this is kind of a higher-level presentation. We have planning, design, and construction that we do for project delivery. We currently have 29 active projects that fit into those three categories. We do mostly transportation, but other categories or divisions that we work with are Water Services, Arts and Beautification. We have the General Government and Bond Projects. So those are just kind of projects that we deal with, projects that we enjoy delivering for the City of Flagstaff. Some of the measurements that we have there are budget and schedule. It's very important to be on budget and on schedule. So those are some of the measurements that we look for. On the right side, our Capital Improvement Program, so that's a summary. Typically, that covers five years or 10 years. We just had a retreat on March 27th to go over that CIP. And we look for short and long-term look-aheads, so that way we can see what's coming, what's going to be next year, what's going to be maybe four years out. We look to schedule and identify projects, so the projects that maybe we know are coming, and we kind of look at those to see where they might fit in. And then important is budget and resources, and to be accurate. So again, staffing, resources, that's very important. At one point, we only had three PMs in capital, and so the resources weren't there, but we were still able to move projects forward. So it's very important to see that. So that was really quick on capital improvements outside of project delivery and project updates. So I will turn it over to Jeff. Is that you next? Awesome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Jeff Baumann, Transportation Director and Traffic Engineer. This is my section, Transportation. We're kind of split, we're, we're definitely co-mingled, but we, we title ourselves kind of split into engineering and a planning function. You can see there's three engineers on the engineering side and three planners on the planning side. All have little different roles. Some are more focused on modeling and grant writing, some are more focused on multimodal improvements on the transportation side. You know, we tend to have, we get, we get a few citizen complaints and questions, tend to, some people focus on that. Some are focused on capital improvement support, development, and development review support. So kind of six people doing different roles, a little bit mixed, but that's our group. I didn't get a picture into the presentation quickly enough, but next time we do this, we'll get a picture into the presentation for you. Wanted to focus on just a couple of, a couple of areas, kind of like Trevor did, kind of high-level. This is our commissions and committees that we're responsible for. Councilmember Spence is our assigned liaison. I don't know that you knew, you were getting three when you signed up for the Transportation Commission, but we, but we're three. So we have the Transportation Commission, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Kind of highlighted a couple of things for each group that we've been doing over the last handful of months. There's definitely crossover. The way we have our schedules set up these days, Bicycle Advisory Committee meets on the third Thursday, then Pedestrian Advisory Committee on the fourth Thursday, and Transportation Commission is the first Wednesday, which tends to be the next week or, or the week after, so we can kind of progress through things somewhat logically. Some of the things that we're working on, Bike Friendly Community Renewal, it's that year for the BAC to work on that. Both the pedestrians and Bicycle Committees are working on the Ped and Bike Focus Crash Report. They just did that the last couple of months. Martin's been working on this Urban Trails and Bikeways Mobile Mapping App. That'll, that'll apply to Trails and Bikeways, so it's really for both BAC and PAC, but I, I put under the BAC section. Ped and Bike Capital Planning, Trevor mentioned the retreat in March. Prior to that, of course, several meetings are focused quite a bit on capital prioritization in the upcoming one-year and five-year programs. On the Transportation Commission side, spending a lot of time on the Residential Traffic, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Guide. So we get those traffic calming requests. We always get feedback that, hey, we'd like it to be a little bit smoother and quicker process, we're trying to make that happen. Yeah, we've been working on that for a handful of months. Micro mobility share, you've, you heard about that at council before it got here. We were working on that with the Transportation Commission. Regional Plan Reviews, Transportation CAP Review, CIP Review. And one interesting thing is the Transportation Commission appoints the BAC and PAC membership, similar to the way you appoint commissioners to the normal commissions. Grant Programs, we spend a lot of time on grant programs, especially lately, so I want to just highlight a few things. We often refer to this as the TA Program, Transportation Alternatives, that's funding through ADAT from the federal government. Safe Routes to School Planning, there's three projects going on that we're working on with Metro Plan right now. Noel's Elementary is one area focus. There's a Mesa focus, kind of Basis FJA area, and there's another focus over near Killip and MEMS. You'll see more of those projects as they move forward, but they're just kind of getting going. Fort Valley Road Multimodal Improvements, that's a grant that's just getting started on the application side, so it hasn't been awarded, but hopefully we will be awarded that in the coming months. SS4A, Safe Streets for All, you've heard about the Safe Streets Master Plan a little bit, and you'll hear a lot more about that soon. We're working on scoping right now to get a consultant on board in the next handful of months, so you'll hear more about that. That's scheduled to be a four-year-long project, so.
Can I pop in here?
Absolutely.
Have we heard word about whether that money is going to be released to us? I know that they were reviewing all of our grants.
I don't know that I'm the best person, but I don't think we've heard any bad news. We've heard encouraging news from our trips to DC. You know about the bad news. We haven't, I don't think we've heard anything recently.
Okay. And, and just for the public's information, when we were last in DC, we met with the Department of Transportation to urge them not to revoke this, this grant. And as you've probably heard, they're really looking at projects that include bike lanes. So we met with them to, to fight for this project. And I know staff will keep us updated when we hear anything.
Yes, we sure will. So that, you were jumping ahead to Butler Avenue Complete Streets, which is, which is the separated bikeways on, on Butler from Milton to Sawmill. And then the last one is a fairly new one, HSIP Program. So that's the same program that's paid for the Switzer Turquoise Roundabout and the Four-Cedar Locket Roundabout are the majority of those. We're, we have a project going right now on Highway 89 out between Country Club and kind of City Limits area, where we're going to improve lighting and signal improvements. In that picture is retroreflected backplates. So we're going to put retroreflected backplates, which is a safety enhancement to all those signals. It's a bit of a hotspot for a couple of ped crashes and fatalities over the last handful of years, so that's that. See, I'm almost there. And some internal programs, just to highlight some of the things that the group does, obviously we're working on that Streets Master Plan, we're co-project managing, managing that with Metro Plan. We do transportation modeling. We do long-range modeling now. For the years, we've relied on Metro Plan, and now we've started to build that expertise internally, which has been really helpful as we ramp up some of these large development projects. It helps us with the TIA process to be a little more efficient. E-bikes at City Hall, I think you all know about that. That is now in our purview, so that's pretty cool. We keep track of those bikes, dust them off, pump up tires, borrow them once in a while to make sure they're getting used. So we, we took that over a little while ago, that's been fun. Annual Crash Report, if you, that usually doesn't make it past the Transportation Commission, but we do an annual crash report where we look at trends, hotspots, different links and intersections, and come up with a handful of projects to work on each year, safety-focused. Small capital projects, we do our own little small projects that don't quite make it onto Trevor's radar. One of the ones that's kind of exciting we're working on right now is the rebuild of the smoke rise in Highway 89 traffic signal. So ADA improvements, we're missing crosswalks, all sorts of stuff out there that's missing that hopefully will go to bid this year still. We review most, we review all the complicated traffic control plans that come through the city, which is, which is most of them, it seems like. And then interdepartmental support, we work closely with Public Works and Streets on a bunch of, on signing, striping, traffic signal work, lighting. Obviously, we work with capital improvements a lot, and we work with CD a whole bunch on all these development projects. I think that's my last slide. Do you have any questions for me, or I turn it back to Paul?
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Kind of go on to Development Engineering. We have 12 full-time employees in Development Engineering. We have six, including our head Development Engineer. We have two, two senior project managers, two regular project managers, and an engineering specialist. And then on the construction inspections, we inspect capital projects and private development projects that are in the right-of-way. So we have a lot of inspections going on, and we have one inspection manager and five inspectors. And kind of dovetailing on what Trevor was saying, of our 31 full-time employees in engineering, we're only missing our senior lead capital engineer. So we've done a really good job over the last year to fill those positions with, with high-quality individuals that fit within our team. We also have an advertisement out right now for, for a transportation intern. We typically look to hire an NAU student as a transportation intern, so that they do a lot of small projects for us and get a lot of good experience. Some of, to highlight some of the work that Development Engineering has going on, on the left is over the last 12 months. So our inter, inter-division staff reviews, that's when new projects come in. Over the last 12 months, we've had 19 site plan projects, nine subdivisions, and then 45 concept plans. And then once they kind of get through that process and, and get into the more submitting plans for construction, engineering reviews, we've had 40, 49 civil plan reviews, 11 Platts, and 294 right-of-way permits. And those right-of-way permits could be anything from the Lone Tree overpass that you see Butler improvements going on, or it could just be a utility company that needs to go in and fix something, or a, or a sewer company fixing a tap for somebody. So lots of projects going on. And then we wanted to highlight some of the housing projects going on. I'm not going to go through them all, but the Lake Mary and the Presidio Tract M are complete. So those are 115 new units. Everything else is under construction, that's 849 units. So for a total of 964 units that are either, some are online or coming online. So a lot, a lot of, a lot of construction going on right now for the, for the, more of the multifamily housing-type stuff and apartments. Another big project that we got going on is the WECOM citywide fiber micro trenching pilot project. So we do have a pilot project going on. I know we had the, kind of the kickoff at the Aquaplex, here's some photos. They basically have a large saw blade, and it goes down the side of the, by the curb and gutter, makes about a two-inch trench. And then you can see the guy on the right, he's just putting in the conduit where the fiber's going to go in. And then the two gentlemen on the lower right, they're putting in a connection where they'll put a small box where the fiber will be for the house. So right now, we're, they're just putting in all the conduit. We're hoping that throughout the summer, there's the pilot project. Everything seems to be going really well so far. Residents seem pleased, no major complaints. Our field staff tell me they think it's about five times faster than conventional boring or trenching methods. So while it does put that cut, cut on the side of the street, it goes, it goes through a lot quicker. And then if all goes well, we're hoping to bring back some code amendments to allow for micro trenching in our code. Again, this is just a pilot project right now, and we have another fiber company that's, that's trying to do a citywide fiber project, so then they could start using the micro trenching as well. So excited about that. Another big thing we did is our Development Engineering staff worked with ADAT and got, got it so we have access to the AZ511 system that shows, typically it's road closures and restrictions on freeways around the state, but we also have it for the City of Flagstaff now. And then the, the picture in the middle just shows the work, like, kind of around the Cedar Safeway area, Spruce Wash. If you click on that, it goes up and shows you the restrictions. Also on the right, you can download a mobile app, AZ511 app, that you can just have right on your phone for easy access. Coconino County also, you know, we're partners with them, so they are, they also worked with ADAT, and they're on, their projects are now on the AZ511 system. We're also coordinating with our Economic Vitality Group. We have the Route 66 Centennial coming up next summer. So we are tracking our capital projects, and then Development Engineering is tracking the private projects that are along Route 66. So we can kind of keep up to date on, on what's going on. Once we get closer to that centennial celebration, we can look, we can work closely with Economic Vitality, our city projects and our private projects, just to make sure we're not putting any restrictions on Route 66 if possible, like, you know, tying in a new water line or a sewer line. So we can really coordinate that as well. Our, our engineering inspections, we are in the process over the last few years of electrifying our fleet. We have six vehicles, you know, they're in the 20, most, majority are in the 20-plus year range. We've had three replaced over, I believe, the last two or three years, all electric vehicles. They seem to be working well. Our inspectors, our inspection manager has the original Ford Lightning, which works well, but needs to be charged more often, but he does more office work, so he can charge at their office. In the middle, we have an Chevy Silverado EV that has over 400 miles of range. And then on the right, on the left picture, is an extended range Ford Lightning. So that, that seems to be working really well. And just picture on the lower right is one of our inspectors out on the Lone Tree Project. City Engineering won the city employee, city employee litter cleanup event held last December. We had approximately 20 staff and one dog, worked the Sinclair Wash area, picked up over 20 bags of trash, bike tires, large debris. So it's amazing when you walk those washes, what you will find in them. So yeah. And we recently did one for the Real de Flag, and you might hear about that on an upcoming manager's update. And then we had some elk crossing Lone Tree the other week at the Bow and Arrow Wash using our foot system, so. With that, that, that concludes City Engineering's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Council? I'd like to note that staff put in the chat that projects will also be updating on flags, on Connect Flagstaff, which is connect dot flagstaffaz.gov.
Yes, that is new. That is actually fairly new through Sarah Langley, so yes.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thanks for allowing me up here today. I'm going to give you a, an overview of the Water Services Division and the update on some of the projects we're working on. This is my first one of these, so if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. I brought my notebook, so the next one will be better. All right, here we go. All right, Water Services, we are water. Anything that has to do with water in the City of Flagstaff is probably us, whether it's drinking water, dirty water, storm water, water coming out of the street in the middle of the night, that's, that's us. We're made up of six sections plus admin staff. I'll go through the sections one at a time, but here's a list of them, field operations, plant operations, storm water, resource management, engineering, and regulatory compliance. There's approximately 80 of us in all, providing these water services to the City of Flagstaff. And I'll go through and just kind of give you a brief overview of what everybody does and what our tasks are. Kind of following Paul's lead here, I'm going to tell you just how many people there are on each crew. So the first one, water distribution, we have, they have 16 full-time employees. The following ones, you'll just see a number there, I didn't put the FTEs. So water distribution, make sure that the water gets from all the sources to your houses. They fix leaks in the middle of the night whenever somebody calls in and says, there's water coming out of my meter, or there's a geyser in the middle of Milton. They'll go out there and they'll take a look, get it addressed, and fix it, and make sure that water stays in the system for conservation. They maintain the pipes, the hydrants, the PRVs and the meters. If anybody's wondering what a PRV is, Flagstaff is built on the side of a mountain, and the higher water goes, the more pressure you have. So if you live down in Continental, if we didn't have PRVs, pressure-reducing valves, your pipes would be blowing up. So it takes that water, and as it comes down the hill, it reduces the pressure so that it stays in a good range for your household appliances. Stormwater Collection, this is a relatively new group for us. There's five people on that crew. I have a picture of them clearing a channel down there in the bottom left. They maintain all the culverts and the stream beds. One of their upcoming bigger projects is they will be clearing out vegetation in the drainage behind, or through the Cheshire neighborhood. So if you see- They maintain all the culverts and the stream beds. Uh, one of their upcoming bigger projects is they will be clearing out vegetation in the drainage behind, or through the Cheshire neighborhood. So if you see people mobilizing out there, that's our stormwater crew, just making sure that water can flow through that channel unobstructed and it's not backing up and flooding houses. Uh, wastewater collections, so we put clean water into the pipes, it goes to your house, it gets kind of dirty, it goes into the sewer pipes. Wastewater collections, job is to make sure that that sewage safely flows from your house to that wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so they maintain sanitary conditions. If you see sewage coming out of the street in the middle of the night, give us a call and we will make sure that it's not anymore. Uh, keep the city clean. Uh, they do a lot of preventative maintenance, maybe some of you have seen them around lately. Uh, they do a lot of this at night, so it's not disturbing or obstructing too much traffic. But they are clearing roots out of the sewer systems. Some of the neighborhoods are more prone to that than others. So, they'll be applying, uh, a chemical treatment to remove those roots. Um, and then they repair clear and clear blockages. Um, just going to give a quick plug here, when it says wipes are flushable on the package, they're not flushable. They create problems for our crews. Please don't flush your wipes. All right, on to the next section, uh, plant operations. This is currently vacant. Um, there are ten, three, three programs underneath this section. Water production, there are ten people responsible for making sure that the city's potable water needs are met. Uh, whether it's pumping water out of Upper Lake Mary, whether it is running a well field, operating a well field, or making sure that all the proper chemical treatment happens to make sure that that water meets state and federal standards. Peak demand varies seasonally, about six million gallons per day in the winter, up to about eleven in the summer. Uh, reason for that is mostly outdoor watering. Uh, people do a lot more watering of lawns and watering of gardens in the summer than they do in the winter. I'll jump over to water reclamation. Um, so, like I said, the water gets dirty when people use it. Collections crew makes sure it gets to the plant, and then when it gets to the plant, there's thirteen people to make sure that that sewage gets treated into our A-plus reclaimed water. They've been doing a great job this year. Um, Troy Dagenhart won Operator of the Year at AZ Water. Uh, he's just running, running an amazing crew over there. And, um, Rio de Flag Plant won an environmental stewardship, uh, award from ADQ this year as well. Um, they've just been consistently producing water that meets all those state and federal standards and have no violations to report. They have a consistent flow throughout the year, so as I said, potable water fluctuates, it almost doubles in the summer. Um, because it, that extra water's going on lawns, it's not making it to our reclamation plant. So they see about five million gallons per day currently. And then, moving on to our SCADA team, uh, SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Uh, they make sure that all of our plants can communicate with each other. Uh, we have remote sites, they communicate with radios. Um, and in addition to all the communications and networking that they do, um, they are responsible for our GIS mapping. So if a pipe is in the road, under the ground, invisible to everybody, they're out there mapping it so that, uh, when the development that Paul was talking about earlier happens, and somebody starts digging a hole in the ground, they don't hit a pipe and cause an extensive outage or an expensive thing to fix. Um, they work with all the sections within water, and they're also in charge of the CMMS, which is the Computerized Machine Maintenance System. Uh, so basically, you can turn in a work order, it goes up, gets uploaded, and then the maintenance crews can look for that work order so the responsible people can take care of it. Uh, just a little picture here on the right of a new, uh, hypochlorite skid that was installed this year. Um, the old one at the Rio plant, um, hypochlorite, it's basically bleach, really, really strong bleach. Uh, it's corrosive, it eats through things, and it was just time for a new one, so I put this in there because it was kind of a good, uh, good project for water reclamation, worked with the SCADA crew to make sure that this was installed and piped correctly, and then also communicated with the computers to make sure that those pumps could dose correctly and make sure the water stayed disinfected with the hypochlorite. I didn't say this earlier, but if you have any questions, please just interrupt me. Uh, Stormwater is run by Ed Schenk. Um, there are five people in the Stormwater section. They plan, they design, they deliver, uh, they maintain our NFIP rating, that's National Flood Insurance Program Rating, um, which helps us pay lower rates here for us, for our flood insurance in Flagstaff. Um, they review development plans, so any new development that comes through, and sometimes even just remodels, they'll look to make sure that the stormwater running off of that isn't going to flood a downstream development, or new development doesn't flood old development that's been existing. Uh, there's also a picture here of what's called a scupper. Um, it's a drainage in the road. These things occasionally get hit by vehicles and need to be repaired, so this is just one of the smaller projects that they're working on. And Resource Management is, Aaron Young's section, um, she has one-point-five people in Water Resources. Um, it's pretty, pretty heavy lift for one-point-five people. Um, we actually have a request in for one more person for her, um, so she could use the help. A little plug for Aaron there. Um, pictures here are showing what's called CSAMT, and I am drawing a blank on what those initials stand for, but I'll, I'll describe it to you. The left picture, uh, there's a guy standing in a road out in the, uh, outdoors, and he is inducing a current through the ground. Uh, as most of us know, water conducts electricity, so wet soil conducts better than dry soil. Uh, so they run these lines all over town. You can see in the right picture where they've run those lines. And it produces a graph like you see in the middle. And where there is a red section, there's a pretty high probability of there being groundwater. So this is how we locate new wells, is, uh, they induce this current through the ground. And if you see a red pocket, um, it's generally a good place to get water. Um, there's a lot more data crunching that goes into that, and, um, if you have any questions, I'm sure Aaron could answer them much better than I can. Uh, so that's how we locate future wells. Um, she is also responsible for our hundred-year designation. Um, our development is highly developed, highly dependent on the amount of water that we can show that we have. Uh, we have to prove that we have a hundred-year supply for all new development. Um, so as part of that, um, we site new wells, and she's working on the Red Gap Project right now, potentially importing future water, yes, Councilmember.
Lee, just to clarify on that, because, um, that is a conversation that people either don't know about or don't know fully about. It's, we have a designation that we have a hundred-year water supply for a population up to a hundred thousand, isn't that correct? Or is that part of it?
I, I don't want to say the wrong number. I want to say it's higher, though. It's like one-hundred-forty or one-hundred-fifty thousand at build-out. And, um, if Mac or Aaron are online, maybe they can correct me on that number.
That's, that's an important designation to have, so, and a lot of people are worried about water. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, I don't want to call anybody out, but you heard what heard, what happened in North Scottsdale last year, where the development didn't have their designation, and people built houses on this parcel, and all of a sudden, there's no water coming out of their taps. Uh, they immediately had to figure out how to build tanks and haul water to their property. So, we don't, we don't want that. Uh, avoid that at any cost. Um, Aaron also oversees the Conservation Division. Um, you've heard tons about them lately, just winning awards all over the country. Um, they've done incredible things with reducing per capita demand. Um, there's three and a half people there who are doing anything from, you know, developing programs Tamara Lawless is doing, to Emily, who is doing community outreach, handing out air raiders and showerheads, and just educating the public on, on what it takes to bring water to their tap, uh, so they can be more aware of the water they're using. Uh, Engineering Section headed by Mac McNamara, um, they design, they construct, and they review plans. Um, I'm not going to expect you to remember this list up there. This is just, I put that in there just as, to show you some of the projects that we're working on to make sure that we can meet, uh, today's demand and future demand. Um, but they do CIP planning, so our ten-year plan, uh, they're highly involved in that. And they also do development review. Um, so, little picture down here in the bottom left is the Wildcat Interceptor project that we're working on. Uh, that's an upsizing of the sewer line from basically Continental Country Club all the way to our Wildcat wastewater plant. Uh, that will allow for increased flows to Wildcat, which will, again, allow for development to continue. Um, the middle picture is just a little thumbnail image of one of our wells, downhill wellhouse, um, basically just a pump and motor, really deep underground, probably about twelve-hundred feet. Uh, pumps it up to the surface where it's treated and pumped into the system. Regulatory Compliance, next section is headed by Jolene Montoya, who was just here a few minutes ago for Bike to Work Week. Um, there are five people in our compliance labs. We have certified labs at the plant. They maintain their licenses so that we can do our own testing. We don't have to send it out to contract labs for many of our tests. And they maintain compliance with state regulations, uh, very important. She is, uh, she and her team make sure that, uh, we're not sending dirty water down the Rio, down Picture Canyon. And they're also making sure that the drinking water meets all state and federal standards so that it's safe and healthy for people to drink. Um, she also oversees the pre-treatment section, so, um, industrial waste, so those industrial users. Um, we have agreements with them, and they have to meet certain standards, so that group goes out and takes samples of their water that they're discharging and making sure that they're meeting their agreements. Uh, they inspected grease interceptors, also really important. Um, restaurants produce a lot of grease. The grease, uh, mixes with those non-flushable wipes in the pipes and forms these giant balls that just don't want to go anywhere, so Joe has to go out there and take them out. So, if we can keep the grease and the wipes out of the, the lines and the roots, we're, we're doing okay. They also maintain code compliance and FOG. I know most people, we live in Arizona, you don't have any FOG, but, uh, that stands for fat, oil, and grease. Um, make sure that we minimize that before it gets into the collection system and the wastewater plants. And in that bottom right corner is a picture of one of our techs, Glenn, who is doing a backflow preventer test. So, if we have people who are, um, using chemical treatment in their facility, uh, we don't want to, we don't want that to flow backwards into the pipes and potentially cause, uh, health, health issues. So, they have a backflow preventer, which doesn't allow any water to feed backwards from that building into our system. So, he goes out and he tests those and makes sure the valves are seating correctly. And that's it for Water Services. Any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. That was very informative. Um, I've, I've heard you answer this question before, um, but it slips my mind. Uh, one of the things I love most about Flagstaff and have always is the quality of our water, as far as the taste of our water is concerned, and, and how it's not real hard on, on our, um, you know, the, our appliances and stuff. So, how do we get that fabulous tasting water, Lee?
Well, thank you for the compliment. So, I think there's, there's several factors that play into that. Um, we are at the top of the hill. Nobody uses it before we do. Um, not saying anything bad about anybody else, but, uh, we do have very pure sources here. Our water is generally pretty cold. Um, cold water is generally pretty pleasing to the palate, and if there are any tastes and odors in that water present, um, you're not going to smell them when it's cold out or when the water's cold. Um, not saying that they're, they are there, but, um, generally, they're, they're more kind of, they're, they're subtle, they're more subtle. And, uh, we've dedicated teams. Um, the water treatment crew, Brian Huntsinger's group, is, uh, fully dedicated. I've, they're huge, like, just, I, I mean, I, I can call them out individually, but Taylor will look at a machine and see that it's not performing perfectly optimally, and he will go read manuals to make sure that it is. Um, so dedication to, the, the team's dedication. And also, um, back to the temperature thing, I think I touched on this once before, but, um, we put, we don't have to put as much chlorine in the water because it's cold here. Uh, biological growth doesn't happen as rapidly when water's cold, um, as it does when it's warm. So we can get away with a lower chlorine residual, which is a, a taste or smell that some people find off-putting. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you very much, and I feel like you're being very modest. I think it has more to do with the team than we would, uh, mention here, but thank you for covering all the bases, Lee.
You're very welcome. Thanks for the question.
Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Can you give us an idea of what is your percentage of non-revenue water? And how do, how does that compare to other cities comparable to Flagstaff?
Ooh, that's a, that's a great question for Aaron and Tamara. Um, I want to say it's in the ten percent range, and we are pretty comparable to other cities, um, nationally. We did a, um, we did a survey or we did a test, uh, again, I'm drawing a blank on the name. We hired a consulting group, they came in, uh, they tested many of our production meters. So, all of the wellhouses and water plants that are pushing into the system, we made sure that those meters are accurate so that after billing goes through and subtracts the water, we can find the difference. And, um, if, if anybody's online, uh, Aaron or Tamara, and are willing to comment, that would be, uh, helpful. And did you, was there another part to your question? No? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Garcia, to kind of bounce off of your question, um, the, we didn't get much snow this year, so the lake is very, very low. So, I'm expect to have a lot more well water in your pipes, which is, uh, higher in calcium. So you're going to see a little bit more of that scale in your tea kettle this year than you have in years previous.
It'll just add to the flavor of Flagstaff.
There you go.
And I know that, um, your staff leads tours for the public of the different plants. How, how would someone arrange that? Is it just during designated times, like the Festival of Science?
So, uh, thank you for the question. Uh, generally speaking, um, if just one person calls and is like, "I want to see your plant," we don't, we don't do that. But if they're with a group like Festival of Science, or it's Water Awareness Week, or if they're in engineering class from NAU, or some kind of an organized group, then we are happy to accommodate. Yeah, um, I would just reach out to, um, either myself, or you can email the savewater@flagstaffaz.gov, uh, email address.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Council, any other questions or comments? Thanks so much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lee. Thank you, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. That concludes, uh, our report this time, unless there's any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right, next up is eight, discussion of childcare resources in Flagstaff and Greater Coconino County and the impacts of the current status.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Vice Mayor. Before I have the privilege of introducing Rebecca Serzon, Director of the Early Learning and Development Center at Northern Arizona University, please allow me to share some, some thoughts. Some of these items are contained in the summaries that you've already read, and I wanted to cover some of them for the benefit of the viewing and listening public. Last year, the Economic Development Section finalized a workforce development study where labor trends were analyzed. During the public response fa, phase of the analysis, the absence of available childcare centers and resources was the primary factor identified by the, the public as having the most impact on their ability to participate in the, in the local workforce. Although childcare and its relation to workforce participation is not a primary factor in the workforce studies analysis that economic development did, the public comments have definitely placed childcare on the section's radar. And following Rebecca's presentation, some details about our future planning to mitigate the shortages of childcare resources will be shared. Sadly, Flagstaff recently saw two childcare centers close, The Ark and Kingdom Kids. And while the number of childcare centers in Flagstaff and Greater Coconino County are very scarce, the number of centers for infants and toddlers are very few in number, to the point of being nearly absent from the regional picture. Less than ten percent of childcare providers in Flagstaff accept one-year-olds. And providers for infants through age three are the most difficult to find. The standard of care is often of low quality, and the cost of childcare is equal to in-state college tuition. Sending an infant to a licensed center in Coconino County, on average, is fifteen percent of an average family's income. Some parents are forced to choose whether they must pay inordinate amounts of their income for childcare or remove themselves from the workforce so they can stay home with their children. In Flagstaff, this dilemma causes some very difficult decisions, and excessive stress for many parents. It impacts some apparent, some parents' ability to reliably pay rent, utilities, fill gas tanks. And it also impacts a wide array of mental health factors, leading to increased stress, often over financial decisions. So in the interest of time, please allow me to introduce Rebecca Serzon, Director of the Early Learning Development Center at Northern Arizona University, and thank you. Thank you for your interest in this subject matter, and here's Rebecca.
I'm just going to start talking. It's just fine.
It's all good. And you can just, it's fine, you can just stand me. Hello, for those of you who I've met before, it's good to see you again. For those of you who are new faces to me, hello, I'm Rebecca Serzan, I'm with NAU's Early Learning and Development Center. Um, I have presented a couple times to the Council on the childcare crisis. And, um, frankly, Jeff ran through a great number of stats, where I'm like, "Oh, cool, I don't have to present anymore, I'm good." Thanks, that's, that's perfect. It's getting there, it's getting there. Yeah, it's good. We don't need animations or anything like that. Uh, so I wanted to talk to you about the childcare crisis, and then specifically what's happening in Flagstaff related to the childcare crisis. And for those of you who have had young children, or in the thick of it of young children, or you're working in this sector, you completely know that there is a childcare crisis. But if you don't have young children, you may not know that this is still an issue even post-COVID. Um, and this slide of what you're seeing is just a snapshot of some headlines that have come through the news in the past two years about what's happening. So what is the childcare crisis? So what is the childcare crisis? It is defined as diminished access to childcare due to high costs, poor quality, mixed regulations across the state and federal landscape, and no common funding stream. So I want to talk about what this does specifically for our community. Scroll through to the next slide. Thank you, appreciate that. So let's talk about what this looks like here. Jeff just mentioned we had two closures in the past two months. That was equivalent to about 150 potential childcare slots. Both of those sites were places that serve children birth to five. And Jeff talked about infant and toddler care, and I'll talk about that more, but there's very few places that care for infants, let alone toddlers. And so to see those places close their doors certainly really hurt our community. I specifically remember when Kingdom Kids closed a few months ago because I was working on a Friday, and all of a sudden, my phone started blowing up. And I got a call, my first call was from an NAU police officer and said, hey, you know, I, I know you're on campus. Well, my wife just called, my childcare is closing today. And I said, today? Oh, okay. He's like, I'm trying to reassure my wife, I just wanted to see what options we have. Do you have space? And as you'll see in this presentation, like, no one, no one has space. We're all at capacity, and the places that aren't, I'll explain why they're not. And so he's trying to reassure his wife that we'll have care the next day. And then the next person literally walks in my door from facilities, like just busts in, and he's like, you know, has the, like terrified look of like, I don't have care, what am I going to do? And I'm like, okay, let's talk about options. And I'm familiar with this topic, obviously, I'm pulling together all the resources. And that's how the remainder of the day went, is that the rug was just pulled out from underneath people. And it's strange to say that some people were fortunate enough to even have a rug under them to start with. So we had these closures, and then for the places that remain open, we're continuing to see staff shortages. And that's what this graphic is up here, is we've seen since COVID, this decrease, and that's not like unique to childcare, right? We've seen a lot of people not return to the workforce for a variety of reasons. But because early childhood professionals are one of the lowest-paid professions, we're seeing it at a higher rate than other professions. So if you don't have staff to be with children, caring for them, if you don't have well-trained staff, you can't even expand your offerings. And so we actually saw sites close classrooms within their centers and say, we can't offer more care because we literally don't have the staff to be able to do it. So then it's a ripple effect. We see less seats, there's less seats available for families and children to have. We see the rates increase, right? Because to keep the doors open, we need to offset that cost. And I mentioned there's no stable state or federal funding for all early childcare, for all early childhood pathways. And so those rates are now on the backs of families. And then we see what Jeff was talking about, there's a reduction in the workforce. It doesn't make sense to go back to work when you're paying X amount of dollars, or I can't find care, or I'll have people come to me who are enrolling in higher education, and they're like, I go back to school in two weeks. And I'm like, oh, yeah, that's great. Like, and they think they're going to have a plan for their child in two weeks to find childcare, and come to find out, like, people are on wait lists for very, very long amounts of time. So that's what it's looking like in Flagstaff. Next, scroll down, thank you. I feel like I need to know your name, whoever's scrolling. Is it, it's not Greg? Thank you. Thank you, Georgina, I appreciate that. So what it looks like at the zoomed-out level is we're seeing economic impacts. And if there's one piece of documentation I want you to look at after this meeting, it's this document. So the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation put together a report specific to Arizona in 2021. It's titled Untapped Potential in Arizona. And what that is looking like, basically, the report talks about is how childcare is impacting the workforce, productivity, the economy, and stuff like that. And so this is the headline, right? Childcare issues resulted in estimated $1.77 billion lost annually for the economy. And it breaks down all those pieces within it. We're seeing absences in employee turnover costs, and that's at like $1.42 billion. 71% of parents reported missing work due to childcare issues in the past three months, like not 12 months, like three months. It's really dire, and it really is impacting us in many ways. So even if you're not a family with young children, like, we are seeing this across the board in our community in a bunch of different ways. Georgina, next slide. And this is an image from First Things First. And if you're not familiar from First Things First, I encourage you to get with Pearl, and Pearl is here, and she is our Regional Director for Coconino County's First Things First Chapter. And they're, they're the one statewide organization we have that funds some early education and health programs for children birth to five. They're funded by tobacco tax dollars. And this slide shows why we should be investing. Not because of all the dooms statistics that I just shouted out, yes, but we know that when we invest in young children, we get the highest return on investment that, than we do from other age groups. There's actually a guy, James Heckman, he's an economist and won some award, and he has this little light graph, and basically, the younger you invest, the higher the return on investment. And what that particularly looks like is that we see children less likely to receive special education, we see children more likely to graduate high school, we see children more likely to enter into higher education or training credential, they're more likely to be homeowners, they're less likely to be incarcerated, they're less likely, like, the longitudinal study is there. So this is the time where we really need to be thinking about where we put our dollars and where we invest, because otherwise, we're paying for it on the backend. So why is the childcare landscape so broken? Let me talk about what this looks like next. Thanks again. So the best way to talk about the childcare landscape is in these three buckets. We have to think about access, affordability, and quality. So access for a family is thinking about where can my child go to childcare? Where do I have a space? Do I want them to attend a home? Do I want them to attend a center? Is there somebody providing care in my community? For affordability, I mean, it's what it sounds like, what you can afford. So let's say you are fortunate enough to be able to find a spot, you also have to be able to afford that spot. And that's where we can start to run into issues. And then finally, in quality, let's say you are fortunate enough, you have a spot, you have the dollars to do that, what's the quality look like? And there's really, there's a really great research study from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation that highlights that high-quality early learning is what makes those return on investments. Midline quality makes no change. And then poor quality actually affects children entering kindergarten. They come in less prepared, and they come in with more behavioral issues. So it's actually to a detriment of a child when we're putting them in those settings. So let's break down what this looks like a little bit more. So Jeff talked about some of these stats, I just want to recap some of them. About 48% of three- and four-year-olds in Coconino County are not enrolled in preschool. We tend to do a little bit better than the state, which is great. But again, when we're thinking about those return on investments, we're still pretty far below the mark. Furthermore, for infants and toddlers, we just don't have enough spaces. So I put childcare desert, and that's actually a defined term. And what that means is for every seat that's available for a child, there are three children in that age range. So I believe Jeff said that for one-year-olds, only like, the last time I did the math was in 2023, but only 9% of seats are available for one-year-olds. The, there's a little bit more offerings for preschool, but when you look at the math in the report that you'll get that shows the number of seats versus the number of, you know, the population birth to five that's in the census, like, we're not close. We're not close. And so people are fighting for these seats, to the point where people will come to me and say, I'm six weeks pregnant, I'd like to get on your waitlist. And, and that's very common, and that's very normal. And I have a different practice in my program about how I do enrollment, so I don't take people who are in utero or planning to get pregnant, but that's what happens. And then people who are just trying to get back on their feet or have recently moved in the community, they're competing for seats that, that children are even in yet. So it just exacerbates the problem. So as far as affordability goes, again, Jeff, like, I was like, cool, I'll just sit back down, I'm good. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services defines affordable care being around 7% of a family's income. So families should not spend more than 7% of their income on childcare. In Arizona, we're hovering around 12%. In Coconino County, it's closer to 15%. And if you look at the cost of infant tuition, let's say an infant is attending a licensed childcare center or home, that is truly equivalent to college tuition. And of course, we think about parents like planning for college and saving for that. And no one tells you that when you birth a child, that you're like, oh, my gosh, you're going to, like, yeah, you're going to spend money, but like, for childcare, for you to re-enter the workforce, like, you better be prepared. It's a really high rate. If you are a single parent, it is closer to 35% of your income. And the supports that are in place are fantastic when we have them. We know that Head Start provides support in our community. As a federally funded program, they have to operate by the federal poverty level, that FPL, and we know that's really difficult to meet in Flagstaff. They have some ability to be able to expand on that, but it can make it challenging, particularly in our community. We see the same thing from DES, from the Department of Economic Security. They fund childcare assistance, but only 6% of families are utilizing that. Furthermore, in Flagstaff, because of the minimum wage, we're still not seeing families able to really access DES. So I did the math today, just to be sure I was still saying the same thing as I did two years ago, but if you are a single parent, you have one child, and you are working full-time on minimum wage, you do not qualify for DES, even at the highest qualification level. You're just priced out of it. As far as quality goes, we are a little bit higher than the state average. And the way we define quality in the state of Arizona is that you are either nationally accredited, that you're Head Start because you meet national standards, or you are part of Quality First System, that's a program of First Things First, that has you at a four-to-five star rating. Think like hotel star ratings, like, one to five, right? That's, that's kind of the, four and five would be a high-quality rating. So in Coconino County, 41% have that high-quality marking. And again, I'm talking about high quality because of those ROIs, we need to be looking at that. But when we look at the broader picture in Arizona, we are very, we are very low. And this isn't news to anybody when you're thinking about education and funding and all those pieces, but specifically in the birth-to-five sector, we are really low in those metrics. According to the National Institute for Early Education Research, who measures states and cities implementing early childhood programming, we are in the bottom 8%. Out of a 10 metric measure, we meet three metrics as a state. And to just piggyback off those stats from NIEER, the National Institute of Early Education Research, you can see the trickle-down effect. We're not funding, we're not putting in enough efforts for quality, and so we see that there are very few children enrolled in preschool programming, like, that gray is the bad color. We're at the bottom. That's what that means. Next slide. So what do we do? I want to talk about some of the things that we've already done, and then I want to talk about the potential of what things look like moving forward. By the way, these are children in our Early Learning and Development Center, our lab school at NAU, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. So the city has already been an investor and supporter in early childhood initiatives. One of the pieces that came out of that work in the Elevate Pre-K pilot, which Liz Archileta will talk about shortly, is our work with the National League of Cities. And many of you are familiar with the National League of Cities because you're already doing work in different capacities with them, they're fantastic. They had, I'll say it correctly, they had an early childhood success team and convened over 30 cities committed to working on early childhood initiatives, and Flagstaff was a part of that work. And so we were able to network and collaborate with other cities, other counties, who were doing this work and see, what are you doing, what are pieces that were working? Nationally, they actually convened in Phoenix in 2023, 2022, somewhere around there. And Flagstaff was highlighted in the report as being able to pilot some, pilot some of this work and highlight some of those things. So again, Flagstaff a great leader in being able to be a part of that work group and participate in the cohort. Next slide. So what this looks like in Arizona is we have a few cities that are specifically leading these city or county initiatives. So obviously, you can see where our star is on the map, but the other stars in there are Mesa, Tempe, and Tucson. So I want to pause and turn it over to Liz Archileta, who has been leading the work through United Way of Northern Arizona on Elevate Pre-K to give an update on the pilot.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Managers. Liz Archileta, President and CEO of United Way of Northern Arizona. United Way of Northern Arizona has been administering Elevate Pre-K for the past year, and then before that, in partnership with Candelon. And in its fourth year now, the reason for the pilot was to determine what impact did free, high-quality, all-day preschool have not only on children, but on families? And as you can imagine, on children, children learned, they achieved academically, they're excelling, especially with high-quality curriculum. With parents, what we found out with families is that they were able to remain in their jobs, they had increased advancement in their, in their workplace, they were able to go back and seek higher education. Folks who were uncertain whether they were going to be able to stay in Flagstaff and take root in Flagstaff were able to. People were able to put a down payment on a house, or they're able to seek higher-quality housing. And they also felt like, overall, their stress levels decreased and their financial stability increased. This is not uncommon, you'll see this in the national data as well, where free, high-quality preschool is offered. And what we're wanting to do is talk a little bit about how preschool is part of that economic infrastructure, that workforce infrastructure, to retain and to recruit employees, and how that infrastructure can also be there to support our businesses who experience that high cost of turnover, who experience the fact that they cannot attract employees. And we're now at the phase where we completed a feasibility study, and the city was, was part of that funding for the feasibility study. The feasibility study was drafted by the Institute for Child Success, and the feasibility study did this. It was a study to look at how, if we wanted to scale up Elevate Pre-K, and we wanted to have in this community free preschool for four-year-olds, how could we replicate the Elevate Pre-K model? And how could we scale it up? And how could we maybe overlay the Flagstaff Unified School District geographic region, which is, you know, kind of the metropolitan region, which has two unincorporated schools as well as, in the unincorporated region, as well as within the city of Flagstaff, the other schools? How would we be able to perhaps scale that up? And what type of funding mechanisms could we identify? Whether that, and there's a variety of funding mechanisms that are identified in that feasibility report. So at some point, you know, I would, if you would welcome me coming to speak about that, I would be happy to do that. What we are thinking right now is we do have a committee that's looking at that feasibility study, looking at how potentially that could be scaled up. And this is going to be something that is not obviously going to happen overnight, it's going to have to continue to be a community conversation. But we do have that resource available for you to look at, and we do have the school available for you to come and visit. And so throughout the month of June, we are scheduling visits to Elevate Pre-K for you and for anybody in the community to come and see what the school looks like, what it entails, and to hear more about how families were able to remain in the workforce and be able to remain in the community and increase their financial stability by having their children go to that school. So you'll be receiving an invitation to go and visit Elevate Pre-K, and hopefully, that will give you a good idea of what, of what that looks like. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Liz before she sits down? Councilmember House? Councilmember Garcia? No, and Vice?
Apologies. Can you just repeat the name or the source of that feasibility study that you referenced?
Sure. Yes. So the feasibility study was completed specifically for United Way of Northern Arizona for Elevate Pre-K. And the, the consultant that did the study is the Institute for Child Success.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you for the information. I do have a question for you. So I serve on-
So I serve on NACOG, and we have been having a lot of struggles with Head Start. And I'm just wondering, for your staffing, have you had any issues with your classroom, losing instructors? And how are you keeping them if you aren't?
We have not had that. The reason for it is because we pay a very competitive salary. The teachers make more than teachers make at FUSD, slightly more. So that's one of the, one of the reasons. And also, I should have mentioned that Elevate Pre-K is for parents, as Rebecca had mentioned. It's for families who do not qualify for the DES subsidy, but make too much to be able to afford preschool. And so in, you know, in the various, in various preschools. So it is that, it is those working families that Elevate Pre-K is for. But no, we have not had any turnover. It may, it's been very, very minimal. We've had teachers there for the entire pilot, some of the same teachers.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'd like to take a moment to talk about how lab schools can be a part of solution because now we are in a community where you have a lab school. And so the NAU Early Learning Development Center, it opened in March twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, holy moly. I was there when it started, I just don't remember the year, sorry about that. And obviously, you know, we're gonna, we're providing high-quality, early childhood education. But among the things that you probably don't know about lab schools is that we're able to go beyond supporting working families to be able to support educational attainment. We're able to serve student parents and provide them scholarships and childcare assistance so that way they're able to get those credentials that they need to have that economic mobility. We can model innovative practices. Part of the idea is that we're furthering the field. We are a pipeline for the workforce. We train pre-service teachers, but also other related disciplines. So I have students from public health, social work. I've had communication come through, I've had graphic design come through. It's really interdisciplinary, speech-language pathology, the medical field. We're also providing professional development to existing teachers. We just hosted a workshop a few months ago that was really successful. And then we're able to do research and disseminate our work through research and national presentations as well, too. And finally, of course, being able to collaborate with schools and communities, similar to what I am doing in this role. And I just, I really hope you take like twenty minutes to come visit us and set up a tour. If for nothing else, that sitting with children for fifteen minutes will bring you a lot of joy. Like I have the advantage of stepping away from my computer and like stepping in a classroom and being like, okay, the world is okay. Like someone wants to show me the cutout thing they made, and someone wants to show me their block tower. And it just, it feels good. But it's a really beautiful, innovative model. We use a curriculum model called Inquiry-Brace Learning that I had learned about in my, you know, studies, but had never seen implemented. And now seeing it implemented, I'm like, this is fantastic. It's really beautiful. So anyways, like, non-shameless plug to be able to come in. So, next steps. I mentioned that the city has been a great partner at large. And you've had great success at being leaders in this space in rolling out a lot of this work. And I want to turn it over to Dave because Dave wants to talk about this connection again to workforce development and what potential next steps could look like for us.
Thanks, Rebecca, very much appreciated. Dave McIntyre, Community Investment Director. And being able to work with kids, I guess, trains you to being able to work off the fly when there's not a presentation ready and whatnot. And we certainly owe you Georgiana as well, so thank you. Yeah, one of the things that, as mentioned in Jeff's introduction, was as we looked at our workforce development study and brought it to council, so much of the public comment was about childcare that we looked at some of the workforce development funding that council has provided through the budget process and tried to figure out, is there a way that we could make a meaningful pilot project to do something to help address the issue? And as we started talking to the fantastic people who are deeply involved in this, we realized how many folks are already working on the issue and, and tried to embed a little bit differently than, than just coming up with a neat pilot project, as much as I do love to do that. And so, so we've been having good conversations with United Way. Liz Archileta, obviously, First Things First with Pearl Santiago, who's here as well. Coconino County, the Wharton Foundation with Scott Pettit. And Rebecca, and have learned a lot. And one of the things that we have been talking with that group about doing is potentially using some of the workforce development funding from the city of Flagstaff, paired with other funding sources from some of these other partners. I think some are generally in place, but not necessarily fully official yet. So I'm hesitant to go there. But the idea being that we would then use those resources to help pay either a person or an entity, someone, to come together and really understand from the feasibility study, from the Early Learning Development Center, from models that have worked in Ohio and Minnesota and Washington State, about what a functional program here in Flagstaff could look like and what those resources would take to provide it. Something that really would help to address the issue in a meaningful way and knowing about the other potential changes that are coming. And so in a recent meeting with that group, conversation came up that this should be brought to the alliance. And so that is, one of the next steps is to come to the alliance, see what the different organizations there have in terms of buy-in and support for this, and then to work on putting together that particular part of the project. So we did learn a lot from doing our workforce development study. We've learned a lot more since then in working with some of the people you've heard from today and various others. And we do very much want to find a way to participate, to help, and potentially to lead in this space, knowing that childcare is not something that economic development is necessarily going to be doing itself. So wanted to mention that, knowing that also, one of the major parts here would not be for us if we were helping to do this to be doing the work ourselves, but to be helping to convene some of the providers, some of the folks here in a way that would help guide that process and really determine what those best outcomes could be. And then to look at how that gets funded and what those partnerships look like and where it's living. And wanted to offer that up and then say to Rebecca, come on back-
Wait a minute.
-for any questions or comments.
I have questions for you.
For me.
Two thi- Two things. When you say center, what does, what does that look like? Is it, is it like what NAU is doing, but for the entire community? And, and have you talked about workforce development in terms of helping people to create childcare businesses?
I think the idea would be, over this next year, is to be able to look at the childcare landscape and the infrastructure and create a strategic plan that makes sense for our community. Because as you've seen, it's complex. You can't just tweak one area and assume all the areas are fixed. You tweak one, you got to tweak the other. You talk like to, sorry, I just want to call you Miranda, to Vice, to Vice Mayor, like, to your point. You know, if you still have low staff wages, then you're on that cycle, and then that turns the other crank and so forth. So I think really the goal would be able to pull the minds together and create an approach that makes sense, that really leads to the path that we want to see.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, that one of the words that comes up often in, in the meetings that we've had is infrastructure. It really is about, you know, how do you create the right infrastructure so that access, affordability, and quality all come up in the right way? And so that, as mentioned, we're not, we're not providing access that then doesn't have the quality. We're not working so hard on affordability that not everybody can function with it. What's the infrastructure underneath that's required for that, so that we can do what she just said?
Okay, thank you.
That's it, my last slide says thank you. So I look forward to your questions.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. I warned you, I had a lot of questions for you.
I'm ready, let's do it.
So first of all, I'm very grateful for all of this information and, and the way that your presentation and the background materials that you provided for us really reflected how interconnected the various challenges of our community are. From the lack of childcare to the lack of affordable housing, the connection of both of these things to local economy, community health. All of those things is, is really important. I'm particularly grateful for your inclusion of the discussion of access in the childcare landscape because increasingly, those sorts of terms are not used or, or considered when talking about some of the economics here. So I, I think that that is very particularly important for the conversation that we're having. The first question I have for you is that the presentation did note the decrease or loss of federal funding for education, early childhood education and childcare at the state and local levels. And I'm wondering what, and just in your opinion, are we doing or what are we able to do to reduce our local reliance on that federal funding to support these programs more at the local level?
Thanks, that's a great question. The sad answer is we already did, right? We met the ARPA dollars cliff, and it ended, and that's it. So I think for programs, what we saw was when we had an influx of federal dollars is that we were able to stabilize things temporarily, right? We had a little bit more stability in the workforce because there were wages being put into that, right? We saw the, you know, balancing of operations and just being able to put in a cost of basic infrastructure. Like what do you need repaired in your center to be able to work? So one example of this was to be able to open another classroom in another place, they needed a sink and a diapering table. And so providing infrastructure dollars to be able to say, here, let's get that going so you can get going, were pieces that were in place. So, you know, the people in the childcare sector are smart enough to know that these dollars rotate through. They're temporary, no one's ever banking on them. I think to be less reliant on them is to certainly look at local solutions that make sense for the local landscape. And that's part of why I was excited to work with National League of Cities and to see other cities that have been successful in, in a variety of levels, in a variety of ways of, you know, working on this initiative. So I don't know if that was like the most tied-up bow answer you wanted, but the reality is I think people already got used to not operating with those. Certainly, as things continue to move in the wind as far as funding sources, like people are certainly preparing, including my own center, for what happens if there, you know, are drop-offs in federal funds and are preparing for those things. But, you know, it, it's part of, you know, the beauty of our community is that we come together, and, and we did this in COVID, and we come together and we find solutions, and we work through that together, and that can be in creative, innovative ways.
Thank you for that. The presentation also noted or, or mentioned a proposed commission to address the childcare crisis. Do you have a vision for what that looks like? Is that something that you're looking to tie in with the committee that you already have? Or were you proposing the development of a new, like, city commission?
You know, and I'll use, I know the term commission has a very defined definition here. I think probably the best thing is for me to pivot to Dave. But what needs to happen is a really comprehensive conversation with both the public and private sector about what happens next, right? To Liz's point, like, we have a feasibility study, we have the data, now what do we do? And we need to have a strategic plan in place to be able to move that forward, so.
I think part of the conversation about where to go with, with the, this potential contract is to identify some of where those structures live best. At the moment, we're calling it more of a task force. But I think, you know, if it was a commission here, if it was a commission with the county, wherever it ends up, there's, there's a need for convening. And United Way has done a great job of that in past years. We'd be looking in part through this potential partnership task force to determine what is the right structure, how is it supposed to be, and where does that commission- commission's a loaded word, of course, but where does that working group, task force, whatever you want to call it, live that brings together some of the amazing knowledge and, and work that's done in this community in a way that leads to the outcomes we're looking for? Is that helpful? Thank you.
Don't go away, because actually, I think my next question may be for you. Just in terms of the conversations that you're having about the integration of childcare supports in Flagstaff's workforce development and economic vitality strategies, can you share any more on like the conversations that you've had already or that you're, you're thinking about in terms of that sort of partnership?
Well, so, so originally, you know, I figured with, with forty or fifty thousand dollars, you could probably fix it, which is not the case at all. And I was being humorous there, we knew we couldn't fix it. But one of the things that we talked about with some of the folks, you know, with Rebecca initially, and then, and then a broader and broader group, was where would be impactful opportunities for us to use a limited amount of funding to try to make a difference? And so we looked at, could we provide some scholarships to childcare facilities to help with their quality increase? Could we provide scholarships to families to be able to put children into existing facilities, which then help with their modeling and quality? You know, there's a lot of really interesting and creative ways that we looked at that we could make a very small difference. But when we really sat down with United Way, with Rebecca, with Scott Wharton, with these various folks, it became more and more clear that, that, that that would have a, an impact, but a very limited impact in a, in a problem that is a much larger scale. And so to be honest with you, we didn't find that pilot project that was going to be the right choice, which is why we're trying to work to identify how to create the infrastructure to solve the problem on a much bigger level. If, if that ends up not being a direction that this community can go, then we will certainly work to identify pilot projects where we can make smaller impacts. But we want to at least work with the studies that have already been done. There's been a lot of work on this issue. And if we can work with the feasibility study and many of the other efforts and find a way to actually address it at a much more community-level scale, that would be ideal. Is that helpful? And I think, I think Liz Archileta would like to add to that.
I appreciate that. So United Way has been engaged in, one of the, one of our main pillars is early childhood development. And so we've been engaged in, in this conversation for quite some time. And some of the outreach that we've been doing is convening some of the business community around this conversation. So we held a, a conver, a presentation, a conversation about the impact of Elevate Pre-K and early childhood development, you know, on the workforce. And the mayor was there and greeted the business community that was there. And that's where we're following up with these visits. My vision is that in, as United Way's role as a convener, we need to now broaden out that conversation, invite more business and industry, and find opportunities where perhaps some corporations and some businesses, if they're going to expand, they might consider having a pre-K facility, you know, in, in their, on their campuses. That might be one of, that might be a part of, of the solution. I'm looking at a partnership between government philanthropy and families. There's a number of models around that. So I think we're at this point right now where we have discussions and we have a, a committee that's been working on this, but we need to broaden it. And that's why the idea of bringing it to the alliance, I think back when I was on the county board of supervisors and we were thinking about after-school programs. And, you know, United Way had identified, oh, an issue where there's a lack of after-school activities for youth. And so we took it to the alliance, and then that's how FACS was born. So here, my thought is now, you know, we have a large-scale community issue, and we have some opportunity. Why don't we take it to the alliance and see how we can broaden the conversation and perhaps develop some type of committee, task force? Again, it doesn't have to be an official commission, but a working group, I would say, because it has a defined beginning and end, and then decide, you know, some paths forward.
Thank you for that, and especially just the, the conversation about the, the impact of Elevate on, on cultivating the workplace. I used to work with team members who sent their kids to Elevate, and one of them was basically my, my work daughter. And so I consider her kids my work grandkids.
Yes.
I'm not sure how I feel about that title, but they were- the fact that she was able to send her kids to that program from the time that they were just starting with education through the full Elevate program really enabled her and others that I knew to continue working and continue supporting their family without having to sacrifice one thing over the other. So I think that's really important. The last question I have, and thank you, Mayor, for your indulgence. I don't usually have this many questions on things. But I'm just wondering, and this might be a question for Rebecca, if the organizations that you're working with are tracking the local childcare workforce pipeline, and what does support for those pipelines and provider training look like in, in terms of this vision that you're establishing?
So similar to what I talked about of there's no dedicated state or federal funds that support comprehensive work-to-pipe programming, that falls into the lump of we don't know a lot about the workforce. Now, we do have some data that are put together on workforce studies. The, there was a- There was a nationwide, one put together recently from the National Association for the Education of Young Children. You probably don't care what the acronym is. But we're seeing, it's highlighting a lot of the things that I'm saying. The working conditions are poor, people are leaving, people's mental health are declining. And because the wages are so low, I mentioned this is one of the lowest paid professions in the nation, we're just seeing like multiple effects. Like we're seeing people that are then accessing social services or choosing to leave the profession altogether. We see people being encouraged to leave the profession altogether. There are a couple places where they're looking at workforce pipeline issues in Arizona, but they're not comprehensive enough because they're voluntary. And so it's just really hard to get that data. There are cities targeting this work. So one is Jacksonville, Florida. Another one, there's a few other places, Seattle, Washington, and then Washington DC. And they're doing different things like building a pipe, building that workforce pipeline through credentialing options, through funding options. But they're also looking at the wages and they're targeting the wages. And that was what helped make a difference with some of those ARPA dollars is that it was targeting staffing costs. And at times it was bridging that gap between operations, but also bumping wages for those people who are staying in there. But they weren't sustainable. So sometimes the systems are able to kind of throw these stipends at people and say, yeah, we want to retain you, like here's five hundred dollars, here's a thousand dollars. But it's not a long term solution. So I know that's like a really fuzzy answer again. We just don't have really good data. We do have data on the conditions of the workforce.
Thank you very much, thank you mayor.
And for those who aren't aware or don't know what the alliance is, it's the city, the county, NAU, CCC, FUSD, and Mountain Line meeting quarterly every other month and just sharing information and kind of coordinating, figuring out what the communities' big problems are that we all need to put a focus on. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you mayor. Rebecca, just for clarification, you'd said about our minimum wage in Flagstaff. If a single parent works full time, they make too much to qualify for DES childcare?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure I understood you right.
Yeah, and I did that math based on, I even rounded it up to eighteen dollars an hour, round out the math, look at the monthly rate. And that's at the highest level that DES would accept at the one hundred and sixty-five FPO.
Yeah, and I just wanted to hear that clearly. I, for ten years, ran a transitional housing program. And I know that when our minimum wage started increasing here, my residents started losing benefits of all types because they made too much money. So that's interesting to hear that. So when did the NAU Early Learning Development Centers start?
We started about two years ago. I think I came on in November twenty twenty-three, so it's been open almost two years.
That's what you said, I just wanted to make sure. So, and I know that Liz has, hi Liz, there you are. We've been doing Elevate pre-K for a couple of years, four years. So I kind of cringe every time I hear about doing a study or getting a consultant because the speed of government always just drives me crazy. And this has been an issue, a crisis for a while. Do we have any expectations of timelines? I know you're wanting to expand it and have a committee and blah, blah, blah. A lot of talk, but no action, that's how I look at things. So can you just tighten that up a little bit and give me some timelines?
Yeah, I think that's an evolving conversation. Do you want to jump in? Okay. We'll just take turns.
Do you want to go first?
Sure, sure. In my eyes, like this has been on fire. Like I continue to come back every two or three years. I'm reporting the same stats that are getting worse. And for me, separate from my expertise in this level, I want to know that the families that are here can stay here, that I can make friends with other families who have young children who aren't going to uproot and leave because they can't afford to be here and there's no place for their children to go. I cringe every time I look at my social media and I'm on like a mom's group and no one knows who I am on the moms, like no one knows my title, that's great. And they're like, hey, I need childcare. And then I just see, I just saw a week ago, there's another center in town and they're closing their infant room because they only have one infant in there. It was this mom's. And she's like, they don't have enough infants to run, so they're just cutting her off. And it's because no one can afford to put an infant in here, right? Like it's all the pieces. So as a community member, the time is now. It's on fire. And when I was sitting and looking at your vision board and thinking about our beautiful, unique community, like part of our vision is to have educational opportunities. And we know our community is very supportive of K-12 and we know we're very limited on the impacts we can have at the K-12 because of the way the system's built. This is something we can do. This is something that we see cities across the nation doing and having success in. And the last thing I'll say, and then I'll get off my soapbox on this topic, is that years ago, I went to a presentation with the US Department of Health and Human Services at the national level. And they talked about kindergarten being an idea in like nineteen oh nine in Wisconsin, where they were like, hey, what if we had a kindergarten? And like now we wouldn't even bat an eye. Well, a little bit in Arizona, we're a little weird, right? But like, it's not a question of whether you go to kindergarten, right? And it's not even saying that everybody has to do this, but it's saying everybody has the right and everybody has the choice so that they can live in this community. So to wrap that up, I'd like to see a strategic plan in nine months. Like we've talked about it, you're right, we have the data, there's plenty of data sets out there. We have community data, we have a feasibility study. And so the time is now for me.
I'll say that my initial meeting, literally the first meeting that Rebecca and I had was with John Saltinsaw from the county, some other economic development team members here at the city. And we said, we're not doing another study, we need to figure out a pilot project, we need some action. But when you start looking at the scale and the complexity of the problem, again, we came up, there was a whole list of potential pilot projects that we reviewed. And to be honest with you, it was exciting to think about what kind of a pilot project we could bring to council and talk about what we had done. But then as we started talking to more folks and realizing what was going on, it became clear that a very time limited, as Rebecca just mentioned, like nine months review of what would be the right model here and what would it look like is important because we would not be able to, with the fifty thousand dollars that we had available in workforce development funding, make a real impact. So yes, I think I'm on the same page, it is on fire. It's something we wanted to take action on. But suddenly the scale becomes very apparent when you're trying to figure out how to make a difference there. And so the goal would be to identify a way to really address it community wide. And there has been a lot of studying done. So I know Liz is going to follow me here, but it feels like the pieces are there to be able to do a time constrained work to get there.
The city, the county, United Way and other nonprofit partners have funded Elevate pre-K now for four years. We have the information, the data that we need. Last year when I came during budget hearings, I said I wasn't going to come to you for funding again. And I am not coming to you for funding again. Elevate pre-K, the pilot project will be completed in July. So that's four years of that pilot project is done because we're ready to move on to the next level, as you're saying. We, there's no need to elongate this any further. The feasibility study is complete. It has in there a number of different financing options, a number of different ways that pre-K could be paid for. And so that, to me, that next step is for you all to take a look at that as well as members of the alliance to take a look at that, to have a few more convenings with the business community. And then for a decision to be made about, do we see this as something that our community is ready for, is able to support, would like to have? What Dave is talking about is this infrastructure, though. If you wanted to say, yes, we want to somehow figure out how our community is going to fund pre-K, then where would that reside? Would that reside within the government structure of the city, within the county? Would, within some combination of their philanthropy? I mean, there has to be some structure, some type of structure has to be laid in order to be able to scale this up. Because we're talking about going from one classroom to multiple classrooms. And so who would do that? Where would it reside, the governance structure, et cetera? So that's where we're at, that's the part that still needs to be determined. But in terms of do we know this works? Do we know that it's enhancing the workforce? Absolutely. That doesn't need to be studied any further.
Thank you Liz.
Sure.
Thank you Rebecca and Dave, a lot of great information.
All right, I don't see any additional questions or comments, council. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we're moving down to item number nine, Greater Observatory Mesa Area Trail Plan.
All right, good evening mayor and council. I'm Robert Wallace and I'm with the Open Space Section of the city. And tonight I'm joined with Mr. Mark Lotheth from Southwest Decision Resource. And he and his colleagues from SDR have been supporting our efforts to develop a trail plan that we're really excited to be presenting tonight called the Greater Observatory Mesa Area Trail Plan. This evening, we're going to be sharing information on the plan's background, information on the public process, how the plan has evolved to the final concept that we're sharing tonight. And then we're going to walk you through the plan to describe what it will achieve and accomplish and what will come next if council provides direction for plan adoption. This evening's presentation is designed to hopefully help bring understanding on how we arrived at our final concept, to answer any questions that you might have and to allow council to provide any feedback. We will then plan to return with a tentative date of June 3rd to ask council to consider adopting the plan by resolution, which will then enable staff to move forward with next steps and ultimately implement the plan following all necessary approvals. I was just going to start out in a little bit of a reminder of a location there. The regional preserve called Observatory Mesa Natural Area is on the west side of the city. And you can see the four light green parcels here on display that are the city's natural area. With the properties to the west and center being Coconino National Forest and then private properties to the north, east and south that include private residence in the gray color. And then Lowell Observatory's private property, section seventeen in blue. As you can see, the area is in close proximity to downtown and Thorpe Park. Ten different neighborhoods share boundaries of the area, making it a great location for recreation and natural refuge. This evening, my first objective is to provide council a good background of the area as it's going to be important to have a good foundation to understand what was considered and why and how comments from citizens are related to the plan and incorporated. It's the Open Spaces' mission to conserve and enhance Flagstaff's open space system with natural, cultural and scenic resources while providing meaningful recreational, educational opportunities for residents and visitors. So the creation of this plan falls right within our assigned mission. So just to provide a little bit of background on the city's ownership, the city took action to purchase the four sections from the state land department prior to 2004. The land was purchased with an approved bond that provided the necessary match with a growing smarter grant from Arizona State Parks. This enabled Flagstaff to purchase the property in approximately 2016. Because grant funds were utilized to purchase the acreage, the grant agreement was bestowed to Arizona State Parks with a conservation easement over the property. That requires the acreage to be retained as conservation land with recreational access. The conservation easement comes with certain restrictions regarding what developments are allowed, how much property needs to be retained without development, and what type of activities can be permitted on the property. I want to mention this upfront because it's a common point that we heard in the public feedback was questioning if the managed recreational, a managed recreational trail system is allowed under the deed of conservation easement restrictions. So we did meet with Arizona State Parks during the development of this plan and believe that the trail plan proposal that's before you tonight is consistent with that conservation easement purpose. This plan was developed in coordination with many partners. And we are joined by some of our land manager partners tonight. I know the Forest Service is here in the back row if we have any questions for them. And during the process of developing this trail plan, we did continually meet with our land management partners. The Coconino National Forest provided input in the creation of this trail plan that we're sharing. And it aligns well with the Forest Service directives. Upon completion of the trail plan, they are willing to review and potentially approve a special use permit that would allow the implementation of the final trail plan. The Forest Service at this time doesn't have any initial concerns and do not anticipate the need for any additional public scoping, given the lengthy scoping that the city has completed. Upon approval of a special use permit, the Forest Service would then allow the city to implement and maintain trails across their jurisdictional boundaries to provide recreational benefits to the public. Lowell Observatory is a privately owned and operated facility. Section seventeen was deeded to Lowell in nineteen ten. Though the primary mission of Lowell Observatory is to pursue the study of astronomy and provide astronomical education, the observatory has always generously permitted walkers and bikers to enjoy their property. In the early nineteen nineties, Lowell even granted the city of Flagstaff an easement for the Flagstaff Urban Trail segment, Mars Hill, that runs up from Thorpe Park and through the northern part of Lowell Observatory's property. So they've been great partners. The observatory has engaged with us during this process and they are interested in retaining substantial open space to benefit their campus and the community. And with this goal in mind, Lowell has supported the development of this plan and is interested in dedicating a formal trail system that complements their campus and the community. However, they are still working out what their timeline for involvement looks like and determining what that looks like. So you will see later that the trial, trail alignments associated with Lowell's property are placed in the long-term planning objectives. And then Arizona State Parks has provided a high level review and feels that the plan does align with the directives of their deed of conservation easement. And upon city council approval, the State Parks Board is willing to review and comment on the plan and consider the approval of that plan. In starting our planning process, we conducted a current conditions assessment. And here are some of the things that we found. We get around twenty to thirty thousand users a year coming up Mars Hill and Railroad Springs. Visitors participate in a broad array of recreation, hiking, biking, horseback riding, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, just to mention a few. There are also only minimal access points to the mesa. Only five point eight miles of the trail system is formal and maintained by our section. And yet we have over fifteen miles of user created unauthorized routes. Here's a map of the current condition assessment for the focus area. So we have the five point eight miles of trail, the foots loop. So if you see here from point two point three, we have the loop trail, Flagstaff Loop Trail that connects down to the current Flagstaff Urban Trail System. And then the urban trail system coming from Thorpe Park along Lowell's property and then through section eighteen and down into the Railroad Springs community. That is the totality of the formal alignments that we currently have. We have approximately eight miles of unauthorized trail, twenty-seven miles of existing road that includes unauthorized routes, two authorized parking areas, and just nine wayfinding regulatory signs for the entire mesa. Following this assessment, we recognize the potential benefits of having a well-thought-out trail system that really would allow for a managed recreation that could be that really would allow for a managed recreation that could benefit the community and also improve the conservation of the land. Our next step was to identify any issues, constraints, or potential solutions and opportunities that would help us create a first concept that could then be used to engage the public. So we did really put a lot of thought into our first concept. We plotted a 500-foot buffer around all of our archaeological sites to avoid. We mapped watersheds to minimize trails and drainage areas directly and, and directly adjacent to springs. We consulted with Arizona Game and Fish regarding the Woody Ridge Wildlife Corridor. And we determined other ecologically sensitive areas to avoid such as slopes, springs, and sensitive habitats where we could. We also considered property management options such as types of conservation, how to support different passive recreational types, user-specific trails and directional trails. On the topic of e-bikes, we determined with input from the Arizona State Parks that e-bikes can be permitted on existing motorized alignments within the focus area. This aligns with the Coconino National Forest Travel Management Rule as well. E-bikes are considered motorized by Arizona State Parks and the baseline conditions when the property was acquired was for non-motorized use. If e-bikes were allowed on trails, then this would go against the baseline and easement conditions since they are considered motorized. So they, we are sending verification to Arizona State Parks where motorized use is currently allowed based on the easements that we have. And would amount to just under 18 miles of road open to e-bikes. We also partnered with the fire department to understand how the trail plan could also meet the needs of fireland use and community safety. We conducted an invasive weed survey to understand where we have weed infestations and to understand how to minimize the spread of those through planning and treatment. And we also reviewed all of our guiding documents like the 2004 voter public publicity pamphlet that petitioned to nominate the trust land as suitable for conservation land, the deed of conservation easement, and the open space management policy plan, just to mention a few. There were some initial considerations. Oh, these were some initial considerations that went into the first draft for public review and input. And throughout this process, the city closely worked with Southwest, Southwest Decision Resources to complete that outreach, to deliver the plan, to survey the public, to retool the plan based on the feedback that we received. And so I'm very excited that we're joined tonight by Mr. Mark Lothseth, who has seen this project really from the beginning through to this point. And his knowledge of the resources and the plan are really exceptional. So he's going to now, now guide us through the public process and give you a thorough understanding on what was involved and how the plan has evolved with community engagement. Mark?
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity today. And thank you, Robert, for setting the stage for me to talk about the community engagement during this process. Trail planning in the Observatory Mesa area began with the Flagstaff Trails Initiative. Excuse me, that was too far. There we go. Began with the Flagstaff Trails Initiative and the completion of the Flagstaff Regional Trail Strategy in 2020. FTI was a cross-jurisdictional planning effort with community members and local partners that pursued a regional approach to trail maintenance, development, and stewardship in the area. One of the high priority regions was the Greater Observatory Mesa Area with five specific goals identified to pursue in more detail. Each of the goals is honored in this trail plan and much of our community engagement sought to understand how to meet the desires of the community while honoring FTI's efforts. There are eight stated goals in the plan, which are summarized here. Each of the plan's goals and objectives are informed by management directives to align with current policies, reflect public engagement, provide access, and protect the conservation value of the Observatory Mesa Natural Area. These objectives kept us on track while working to find balance in the proposed priorities. Using a trail inventory and assessment of the planning area and the priorities from the regional trail strategy, a conceptual trail plan was created to show the community for feedback. A draft trail network identified an expanded trail system with increased public access to the planning area. And the trail assessment informed recommendations for closing unsustainable roads and trails while maintaining others to improve conditions. This proposal map was used to engage the community during our Phase 1 public outreach. We had three public engagement periods during this process, which included a focused stakeholder engagement period where we requested comments and feedback from a range of community organizations working in outdoor recreation, public land stewardship, and community well-being. As the process progressed, we increased our level of engagement with each outreach phase and sought as much information as we could get. As comments and questions became more specific to the management of the Greater Observatory Mesa Area, we presented to the Open Space Commission a total of six times. And they provided guidance on many of the issues, including allowed trail uses, signage and education standards, and trail directionality. The commission was really helpful in working through the range of comments we received and their efforts are reflected throughout the draft plan. From the 585 individual comments received, the three major themes we heard revolved around neighborhood concerns, the recreation experience, and wildlife and environmental concerns. Residential concerns addressed draft trail alignments near private property, revealed the realities of providing more public access to the mesa and the potential increased traffic and related issues in nearby neighborhoods. Trail users commented that the draft would benefit from reducing redundancy and increasing opportunities for more trail loops with a preference for more elevation change in the proposed alignments. Maintaining wildlife habitat with an eye towards protecting migration and natural water sources was also encouraged in the comments. We analyzed and synthesized all feedback to modify the proposed trail map and strike a better balance of the diverse perspectives we heard. Two access points were removed to respect private property, but we added a new trail connection and access at Coconino Avenue. That trail, along with another loop connection in the southwest of the planning area, increased the proposed trails by two miles to 26 miles total. We improved the adaptive trail alignments and added user-created trails for adoption to support increased challenges. Comments expressed the desire for using existing roadbeds for dedicated recreational opportunities and one such road was incorporated. We identified two areas for education zones and based on the advice of wildlife habitat specialists, increased the buffer around springs from 1,000 feet to 1,320 feet to protect critical wildlife habitat. We also heard a range of comments that prompted more discussion among the planning team and that feedback set up the second engagement period. We took the updated map back to the community and did some direct outreach to local stakeholders. We had a robust response to the draft with over 2,900 individual comments, 16 stakeholder meetings with commissions, neighborhood associations, and nonprofits, and 42 comment letters submitted. Concerns expressed during this time centered on environment and wildlife habitat and trail user experience. Both of these interests being common themes we saw throughout the engagement process. During this period, we learned Lowell Observatory's internal planning and began displaying their property in the long-term planning section. For the third, third version of the draft, we'd reduced the overall proposed mileage by over 25% from 26 to 18 miles of new trails. Trails previously proposed for adoption were removed due to residential and habitat concerns. The reduced mileage for proposed trails was mostly in the central and western portions of the planning area. This reduced the density of the proposed system and created larger areas of the mesa with no trails to support wildlife and habitat movement. The proposed adaptive trails were altered by placing a similar amount of mileage on Observatory Mesa Natural Area and Forest Service lands. The two education zones were refined and more details were added for signage and stewardship messaging. With the range of land management-related comments we received, we worked with the Open Space Commission to align plan language with Open Space Management Plan Guidelines. The commission helped us work through comments related to the management of the trail system, recommending that approved trails remain non-motorized and multi-use and trails be open for bidirectional travel. The commission also recommended language be added to the draft plan related to sign standards, language for stewardship and regulatory information, and maintenance schedules. Completed in October of last year, almost 450 people participated in the final comment period for this plan. Overall, comments recognized that the plan was mostly meeting its goals and objectives, but the primary concerns remained. The tension between land conservation and recreational access never went away throughout this entire process. This photo from the September 19th public meeting is a good visual for differing perspectives of this trail plan and the Observatory Mesa Area. Throughout public engagement, we consistently heard a fundamental difference in how community members view this landscape. For some, it is a quiet place of refuge for people and wildlife that should remain unchanged, that preserving the environment should take precedence over human interests in the area. For others, it is a high-quality place for outdoor recreation in Flagstaff's backyard. Good trails on the mesa are an overall positive for the community and for everyone who enjoys trails. While we did hear recognition from some community members of the improved balance between human and environmental considerations, we still received a significant volume of comments expressing dissatisfaction over the lack of mountain bike trails. The more intentional we were in addressing habitat concerns, the more we heard that the trail experiences proposed were not meeting community expectations for outdoor recreation. We again reevaluated our proposal and that feedback brought us back to the Open Space Commission. Throughout our work with the commission, community members showed up to speak to their passions and for their communities. A proposal was discussed to add two trails for mountain biking in the southwest of the planning area and to adopt a user-created trail known as Hot Pockets into the system. Each of these trails would provide approved opportunities for mountain biking while consolidating access to the southeast area and continuing to provide larger areas of under, undisturbed land for environment and habitat protection. And community members spoke to support these additions. The commission recommended that the three trails totaling two miles be added to the draft plan. Observatory Mesa is bounded on much of the north, east, and south sides by private property. We looked at every potential access to, access point to expand access to the adjacent neighborhoods, but ultimately were able to add two. However, the parking area west of the public works yard at the McAllister Ranch property can be the primary access point for trails to draw traffic away from Thorpe Park and the Townsite neighborhood. You can see on the map on the right, there is a higher concentration of trail loops near the Futz Tunnel Springs Trail on section 18. We proposed these trails intentionally to create short and moderate-length loops for a variety of opportunities for all types of users. This area is also where the majority of unsustainable user-created trails are proposed for restoration to ensure the land is managed appropriately. From, from a conservation perspective, the cross-jurisdictional plan for city and Forest Service lands proposes a net growth in recreational trail opportunities of about five and a half miles. But when you consider road width versus trail width, we're proposing to restore approximately 11 more acres of land than to develop. This plan advances the goal of the Open Space Section to make Observatory Mesa Natural Area a place for passive recreation just west of downtown. Ultimately, we aim to create a community trail system that is a quality place for folks looking for diverse recreation opportunities for varied skill levels. But is also a place for solitude, wildlife viewing, and the perfect place to go for people and their families to experience our trails for the first time. The final numbers for the trail plan include seven of the 20 proposed trails, seven of the 20 miles of proposed trails for adaptive uses. These are trails built to be about three and a half feet wide as opposed to the more typical two-foot width with additional specifications to encourage a good experience for adaptive hand cycling, a trail use that continues to grow in popularity. Four of the 10 proposed trails will be open to hikers, equestrians, and cyclists, but will be constructed with the mountain bike experience in mind. Trails were removed for habitat health throughout the central and western portions of the planning area. We increased parking and access and identified signage and messaging standards to set the tone for a safe and positive trail experience. We reduced the amount of impact while creating educational areas for everyone to learn what makes Observatory Mesa so special. We have been working with community members for almost four years. We've come a long way in our understanding of the planning area and how our neighbors recognize the value of the Observatory Mesa Natural Area. We thank our community members for their thoughts, questions, and engagement throughout this process. And without their insights, we would not have the level of balance you see in this plan.
Thank you, Mark. And hopefully council feels like they're getting the idea of what the plan proposes and the extensive work that it really took to bring this forward to you tonight. Next, I'll be speaking about how the plan could be implemented. Because the plan proposes numerous improvements, we determined that the best strategy for implementation was a phased approach. So you'll see that the plan implementation is divided into three priorities and a long-term project section as well. Priority one will construct and maintain and adopt trails closest to the Flagstaff area where they receive the majority of the use. This was deliberate to help meet the need for recreational opportunities where it would be most impactful and where we currently have the largest need. It will focus on providing loop opportunities so that the trail users will have the benefit of utilizing the mesa for regular exercise and relief. This highlighted section is Trail 5.1, Trail 5.1. And this will help create a loop near the North Tilly Lane Neighborhood Access Point. This is a good example of a smaller loop that would be easy to use for a morning or afternoon exercise for the immediate neighborhood. Also in Priority One, we have this Trail 5.5, which is a manaring trail that helps connect the Priority One Trail System and makes a larger loop through sections 7, 8, and 18. And it connects to the current urban trail system that drops down into Thorpe Park and, and Railroad Springs. This is illustrating access point 2.15, one of the two access points that we added. And the related Trail 5.21 that will help provide neighborhood access for west lower Coconino Avenue. Currently, folks are walking along the trail line or the railroad line and this will be a much safer option for that. Here on slide 26 is 5.26 in section 8. And this creates a short loop joining the Trail 3.1 and the Futz Mars Hill Trail. This is another short route for regular exercise or a brief visit to the natural area. In the southern part of section 18, 5.25 will create a loop that when it's connected with the 5.2 along the southern slope of the mesa. And then these two trail alignments that Mark briefly mentioned will also align themselves to the two educational zones to help support field trips to the area. The educational zone that's immediately near the Futz Mars Hill and educational zone near the Railroad Springs, allowing classrooms to provide, to have easy access for, for education and field trips. Overall, Priority One will increase the managed trail opportunities before closing user-created trails and roads to help prevent the loss of opportunities before implementation can occur and to help prevent more unintentional trail development. Next, we have Phase 2, which will expand the trail system for longer distance opportunities. This trail that you see here coming from the Fort Valley Trail System is called 5.12. And it provides another access point into the mesa and enables citizens to utilize the current parking area at that location. It would add an additional five and a half miles to the, the trail system. In section 13, we are proposing numerous new alignments that will provide a variety of experiences for walking, running, mountain bike optimized experiences, adaptive uses, and equestrian rides. The two trails that are between 5.8 and 5.7 are the ones that were recently added on with the third comment period that will provide some opportunities for optimized mountain biking from a north-to-south route using the current elevation change. During this phase, we'll also develop two trailheads, one located south of section 18 on city property. This location is proposed to be the main point of accidents, access for residents driving across town. And so we'll work to provide facilities such as restrooms, parking, signage, and of course, trail access to the mesa. trail access to the Mesa. Another location on the west side of Section 12 there is primarily to accommodate equestrian users. Equestrians are not allowed on the Futz per city code, so this would provide access, a bladed parking area for trucks and trailers to unload horses and access the trail system. During this phase, we'd also start restoring user-created trails where Priority One trails were already well-established, so those are the red that you see there. Priority Three will focus on restoring unauthorized roads to support the non-motorized area and to eliminate confusion and promote resource conservation. So on this next slide, you'll see the areas that will be targeted and the approximate routes that will be restored during that time period. And then we have long-term, our long-term phase. As we mentioned before, Lowell Observatory is currently undergoing internal planning and has some questions that they need to address before they can fully commit to a partnership that will connect trails utilizing their property. But they are committed to determining how they can support the plan for the benefit of the community, and it's identified here in the long-term phase what those plans could include, such as formalizing access point 2.13 to provide additional access near Thorpe Park and formalizing the access point 2.18 there to the south utilizing the current Futz Also during the long-term phase, we would like to investigate building segments, two segments for ADA accessible trails, possibly from like the nearby Lowell Visitors Center Parking Area, to provide trail opportunities and for education opportunities for folks that have mobility challenges. We also have thought about a few other minor additions that you can see here on the map that help with current needs and connecting Lowell's property to the Observatory Mesa Natural Area at large. But mainly, our work with Lowell will really be to determine what we can adopt and manage as formal trail routes that are already existing on their property. This will also happen in the long-term phase. We'll examine the possibility of adding an access point 2.20 there that involves further work with the railroad to gain permission for trail users to utilize an existing underpass. We all want to ensure that we provide adequate access and that users can safely access the area, but this objective will require some additional thought, engineering funding, and cooperation with the railway. That brings me to next steps. So tonight, we're here to inform the council and provide you with the opportunity to provide any feedback. We are confident that we have developed a plan that's really well-rounded by finding the middle ground with the community. It meets the community's needs, we believe, and it helps conserve the area. But we do want to know if we've missed anything. If everything is looking good, then we do plan to return in June to ask the council to adopt the plan by resolution. Following that, we will take the plan to Arizona State Parks and Trails Board to present and ask for their approval. If approved at that level, then we will develop inter-agency agreements with our partners and require any needed permits. And this will be followed by field markings and trail alignments and a final cultural resource review and clearance with our partners, and submitting the project to the State Historic Preservation Office for their review. If all goes well, we will then work on grant applications that will supplement our capital project funds. Implementing the trail plan is identified in the Open Space Section's 10-year capital project plan, and this particular project would be funded starting in fiscal year 2029. That brings me to closure of our presentation, and hopefully all the information is helpful for you in discussing the plan. And Mark and I and the Forest Service are here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. We do have some questions and some comments, and then we'll take public comments, and we'll come back for any additional questions that council may have. So first, we have Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of quick questions before we refer to public comment, and then I'll probably have some direction and maybe some more questions after that. So my first question here is, you see these little quadrants that are labeled with numbers. Which one of those are under the jurisdiction of the City of Flagstaff? And where are the other parts of this trail system, quadrants? Who do they belong to and who resides over those?
Sections 6, 8, 12, and 18 in kind of the yellow color that you see up in the map there, that is the city's Regional Preserve, Observatory Mesa Natural Area. And then the Sections 1 and 13 and the other sections to the west are owned and operated by the Coconino National Forest, as is the Section 7 there in the center. Section 17, which you can see here in the corner, that is Lowell Observatory's private property.
It looks like the trail system kind of misses that area for now, just kind of skirts the edge of it for now.
Yes, this is identified in the long-term planning proposal. So we had the three phases and then the long-term, which has more challenging objectives in it. So this, you can see Lowell's property in Section 17. There is a pretty high density of roads and user-created trails on their property. They are interested in keeping most of that for admin access or for public access, so it would really be working with Lowell to determine which of those trails we can adopt as part of the formal trail system. And I'll point out that Section 17 is closest to all of the neighborhoods, and it probably receives the most substantial use out of the entire Mesa. And so definitely Lowell does play a key here in the future.
Okay, and I asked those questions really because I was trying to wrap my head around, you know, the kind of the dichotomy between the Forest Service idea of what passive recreation is and then what the intent of the conservation easement was for the City of Flagstaff's portion of this and how they intermingle. And that'll probably result into a question later on, but that was just the idea behind it now. So with the conservation easement, was there anything that prohibited directly the plan that we have in front of us now? I mean, I know that you expressed that it really didn't, but I know that we've had a lot of public comment that has come to us directly, and folks are concerned that the intent of, well, Mars Hill in general was not for a recreation park necessarily or for anything of that nature, but was for more of a place to, you know, make a museum of Flagstaff since it's being overtaken by development and growth, quite frankly. What are your ideas on that?
Thanks, Councilmember. The conservation easement that the state holds has language that permits supporting infrastructure for access and for trail use. It does have limits on how much of the property can be developed, and that is limited to 20 acres. And I'll invite Mark up here to just kind of speak to some of the numbers that I know he's aware of. So we do believe that we are working within the deed of conservation easement and that this trail system will not only benefit the public as far as recreation, but in conservation as well. And Mark cited some numbers about the percentage of area that will be developed and also the percentage of area that will be restored during the process. I'm very proud of the fact that this trail plan not only addresses like adding new trails and access points and parking, but really will look at restoring what is currently being used as the trail system, which is, in my opinion, a spaghetti network that is not a very sustainable system. So I think in the long run, when we manage property, we end up with a better preserved area for the community, built for natural history and the wildlife and the trees that it takes, and also for recreation.
Yeah, thanks, Robert. Within those 20 acres of development also includes what exists up there now and what existed when the conservation deed was put forward by Arizona State Parks. So at 100% implementation, we are proposing that 7.8 acres ultimately are developed in the landscape of those 20, which leaves 12.2 acres undeveloped where we potentially could have proposed more trails, more infrastructure up there, but determined not to based on public commenting and the desire for balance within the trail plan.
Thank you for that. And when you were speaking to the idea that putting something in place that's official could actually help preserve the trail system itself and the natural environment itself, it brings me back to Campbell Mesa. When we were kids, it was just a series of dirt roads, kind of like what you see on top of Mars Hill now. And as soon as people decided to go in there and preserve those trails, we actually have like better maintained trails than we ever did in the past, less litter and such, and it seems like we have more trails now. So that's something that tipped the top of my head when you mentioned that, and it kind of gave me a perspective that I wasn't thinking of before on Campbell Mesa and Picture Canyon. You know, when I was a kid, those things were undeveloped, and it was, in some cases, an undesirable place to be because of that. But I appreciate that perspective, and I'll get some questions lined up for you for the next round. Thanks.
Councilmember House.
Mayor, I'm going to hold mine for after public comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate seeing the Forest Service with us here. Matt, good to see you. Robert, real briefly, please, go over some of the highlights or the broad strokes of how restoration is going to occur on these areas that have been identified, especially the roads.
Yeah, here on the left, you can see their current conditions, and this are all the existing, or not the majority of the existing unauthorized trails or unauthorized roads. And here, you can kind of see the final proposal. And I feel like it's going to end up being a much more clean and straightforward system. The restoration that we are doing out at Picture Canyon would be similar to what we would do at Observatory Mesa. We have a recreational trails program grant where we are going in and identifying any unauthorized road or trail and determining what makes sense to restore, and then going in and doing a seedbed preparation in most circumstances, which means ripping the soil around four to six inches with either hand tools or like a tractor, and then planting seeds, putting mulch down, and some kind of erosion control netting, and then posting signs that say "Restoration Area." And we have found that with our project at Picture Canyon that a lot of people, when they see that, they realize that the importance of those areas being preserved, and they will stay off. And you can see grass and shrubs kind of coming back up through those areas that were more heavily used.
These are all native seeds, I imagine.
I have a general question about the extensive public process. I think this is probably one of the larger processes that we've seen for any issue. So kudos for that. And I'm wondering how, I mean, I've read through the comments that were attached to the agenda based on the different phases of the project and the outreach. And as was mentioned earlier, we're receiving a lot of very conflicting emails. And so, I mean, I'm guessing, I mean, I'm asking, how did you reconcile? I mean, because I'm sensing two very different visions, one with more trails and public recreational opportunities, and the other for more of a passive, you know, limited human use of the land. And I'm wondering how you reconciled those and what your, I mean, I see that you're presenting the plan that you believe balanced those, but I guess I'm just trying to, I guess I'm just trying to think through the process and where we are in the public comment that we're about to hear.
Mark, will you address the density analysis that we did and how we kind of landed with that?
Yeah. I mean, it really goes back to that fundamental tension that we heard, right, between land preservation and increasing quality access to Observatory Mesa area. So really, those buckets of tension that we heard were residential, environmental, and wildlife, and then the desire for increased recreational opportunities. So trying to create areas within Observatory Mesa, when you look at more of the managed recreation, encouraging the right types of trail use in appropriate places while leaving other places fundamentally left alone or even restored, trying to get rid of some of those roads to increase, you know, the quality of wildlife habitat, was that balance that we were looking for. And so we took a look at trail density and how trail density would potentially impact the quality of the environment and what sorts of uses could exist happily, coexist happily with the natural environment. So we made sure that we weren't, we really weren't proposing a high-density trail network in any one area. The highest density that we have is the southern portion of the Observatory Mesa Natural Area, that's Section 18. And that was, again, looking for that balance between where do we want the people to go? How do we want the people to access the space? And once they get there, are they going to have the opportunities that they're looking for? Trails are managed zones of human impact on a natural landscape. So if we're able to manage the way that people interact with nature and provide experiences that they're looking for, we have a better chance of limiting impact in other places. So determining where places were appropriate for trails, where a lot came from public comments. The things that people wanted to see in the trails are generally reflected in this plan based on all of the tension that we heard, right? We weren't able to fill this map up with trails. We weren't able to leave this area alone, knowing that the use exists and that the impact is currently happening. So that balance, the map on the right, is the attempt at balance that we had based on all the public comments that we received.
Thank you. That's really helpful. All right, so I don't see any other questions from council at this point, so I'm going to go ahead and take public comment. First, we have Martos Hoffman.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to talk here today. And thanks to this group of people behind me who have really done, I think, a pretty incredible job of developing this plan. I've been involved in it for, not since the very beginning, but pretty early on in the first phase. I think it's a balanced plan that they've come up with. And yes, there are tensions in there, and I think you'll probably hear those tensions in the comments following me by some user communities. But what the plan does is it, it really is a multi-use plan that protects the landscape and also offers some recreational opportunities in a variety of ways. What I really like about it is that it continues to have multi-use, multidirectional trails. It's not limited to single-use trails, and by that, I'm particularly referring to mountain bike trails. As a point of reference, in the Dry Lake Hills, which has a huge density of newly-constructed trails, just this last Sunday, I had two scary experiences with mountain bikers roaring down Sunset Trail. And I think part of that mentality that's coming from the mountain biking community is there's a downhill-only mountain bike trail adjacent to Sunset, but people don't quite seem to know that. And what this does when you have single-use trails is you create a kind of a sense of conflict or a sense of people entitlement to one area or another. And I think that this plan does not create that. I think it's good to have multi-use trails. I applaud that the conservation easement of no-motorized e-bikes is maintained throughout the trail system. I think that's great. I like the fact that there's a low, relatively low trail density overall on the Mesa. That is particularly the case, you know, around the northern and central parts of the plan or the Mesa. But it still does allow for a pretty high concentration of trails and user types on the southern and southeastern portion of the unit. I do have one suggestion, and that is- I do have one suggestion, and that is that the trail access point 2.7, which is currently partway down Forest Road 515A, be moved to the junction of Forest Road 506 and 515A. And I think that would just eliminate a lot of potential motorized vehicle conflicts or issues, not conflicts, issues along 515A from 506. And I think that might, it would still provide access for probably a rarely-used point of access, but would also serve to protect the Observatory Mesa in general. Thank you.
Thanks, Martos. Jackie Thomas. Excuse me, just one moment. Martos, Councilmember Garcia has a question for you. Sorry, Jackie.
My apologies, everyone. And not to put you on the spot, if you can't answer the question, don't feel pressured by me asking you in the moment, please. But I just wanted to get to the bottom of e-bikes, since I tried my first one out maybe three weeks ago, and I'm a little iffy on them. So you said no, you don't want e-bikes up there. But I know that there's Class 1 and Class 2 pedal-assist, more like mountain bikes, that have range limiters of like 20 miles an hour, I believe, and below. Do you see those being an issue, being on the trail? Or is it just some quasi-motorized e-bikes that you're talking about?
I'd say it's a little bit of both. One is that it is a motorized vehicle by definition of the state parks system. And also, it is not, as my understanding, e-bikes are not allowed across the Forest Service, across the Coquenino, on trails, they're allowed on roads. I'm very concerned about the potential precedent-setting nature of allowing e-bikes on trails, especially as they go through the Forest Service lands, if the city council were to approve that, because that could have national implications. And then the other part of your, my response to your other part of your question is, I mean, I think e-bikes are great. I think they have a place. They have a place on roads, on designated places where they're allowed. But it does change the way that people interact on the trails. The e-bikes approach much more fat, much more quickly, especially on the uphill. And I think it's just generating unnecessary levels of interactions that, it kind of depersonalizes the trail interaction, let me put it that way. I think when somebody approaches slower, you have more chance to interact with them. It's a friendlier trail environment.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Hoffman.
Thanks.
All right. Jackie Thomas and then Mary Norton.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. So I'm on the Open Space Commission, I just wanted to let you know that. And we've taken a lot of comments. I just wanted to give emphasis that the synthesizing so much information from so many members really pointed out how many people use Observatory Mesa. The numbers are 20,000 to 30,000. So this isn't just a piece of land that we're trying to put trails on for like the people that can walk there from downtown. I mean, this is an area that a lot of people will be using. And as Flagstaff grows, it's only going to get used by more people using it. And this is really an attempt to listen to a lot of people wanting to remain as an open space, but also recognizing that as more people come here, there's going to be more people there. And there's a saying, which is sacrifice sites, like if you're a wilderness ranger and you go out in the backcountry, you have these campsites that are too close to water, too close to trails, but you cannot restore them, you cannot keep people out of them, and you can call them a sacrifice site. And I just see like a lot of places on the Observatory Mesa right now as a sacrifice site. They're in the wrong, the trail routes are in the wrong location, we have resource damage, we have impeding wildlife movement. And the trail plan that we've come up with is trying to address all of that while providing recreational opportunities. Nobody's happy, but I kind of have settled with, you know, that this is a compromise. Some people really felt it was pretty good, a third of the people did, a third of the people felt like, you know, it was okay, we could live with it, and a third of the people don't like it at all. And I look at that as two-thirds of the people are like, okay, yeah, we're good with it. Or you could look at it the other way. But we've put a lot of effort into this. Thank you so much. We've had a lot of presentations, a lot of discussions, late meetings, even in the Open Space Council, you wouldn't think it was that exciting, but sometimes it is. And I'm really proud of what we're bringing to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Norton and then Michael Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mary Norton. I am on open spaces, but these are my own comments. Observatory Mesa, as legally designated open space, owned by the city, purchased by its residents with a binding conservation easement, is unique and different. There's no need to tell you that, you were all there and part of it when it was purchased. This proposal is compromise. After hours and hours of work, research, meetings, outreach, conversations, some of which were contentious and always passionate. The proposal offers restoration of 10 years of unmanaged use and limited maintenance funds. It's conservation for our future, while still allowing appropriate passive use that can accommodate current types of recreation, yet with much-needed guardrails that are aligned with that conservation. It's within the foundational guiding documents for this specific property and how open spaces is to be managed by this section of PROs and the Open Space Commission. And it's been a deep dive into those documents over the last three years that I've been on open spaces, because we've had two cases that require a thorough understanding of them. We had the Observatory Mesa right-of-way from Hidden Hollow Road to the private parcels on top of the Mesa, which you heard in December, I think it was, and then this trail plan. So contrary to some criticism that we heard, those documents are not irrelevant and the commission is not uninformed. As a commissioner, I want to say that I was one of two no-votes on the final map. And my support remained with the prior map, the third proposal, before the three additional mountain bike trails were added back in, based on what I personally felt was continued undue pressure by one user group. However, I support the decision of the commission and the proposal that you're seeing tonight. My no-vote stands on record, and as a reminder that this is about compromise, no one user group will be 100% happy. If you happen to find in your own reservations about this plan, I hope you'll remember that in this case, less is more and Pandora's Box cannot be closed once it's opened. Having said that, I want to plant this seed for the future. Once this plan is approved, funded, and completed, please do not market it as a trail plan. Market it as a natural conservation area or preserve. This area is and will be sensitive to over-tourism. And as the saying goes, if you build it, they will come, and then we've lost it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Michael Murphy and then Michelle James.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Michael Murphy. I'm fortunate enough to be manager at Flagstaff Bicycle Revolution. I'm fortunate enough to live close to the Mesa and then this town where we can recreate in the outdoors as we all like to do. And I get to use the Mesa several times a week to hike, ride my bike, just be in the woods, get away from things, et cetera. I can speak on behalf of a lot of my coworkers, my staff, my neighbors, and even our customers, how important the Mesa is to us to be able to use. And right now, as been said, it's a spaghetti junction, it is unorganized, it is mostly unsustainable. So I think this plan has focused pretty well at addressing all of those. The need and want for trails up there is pretty obvious. If we ignore that, we're only going to see more unauthorized use, more unauthorized trail construction, and probably more user conflict. To me, this isn't a build-it-and-they-will-come scenario. This is, we're already here and we're already using this a lot, so let's use this plan as a way to build something that accommodates our community in an accessible and sustainable way. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle James and then Ken Lane.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I have sent you emails, so you kind of know my thoughts. I was going to summarize things and maybe try to identify why I have concerns. So F Cube's concerns relate directly to the intent of the deed of conservation easement between the city and state. That agreement states that no changes can be made to the parcel that would seriously or negatively affect the baseline conservation or open space values. I haven't heard anyone else speaking about baseline conservation levels. There's a whole report that you guys probably have been able to see that was written in the early 2000s that outlines what's considered the baseline condition according to the conservation easement. It's our opinion that significant increase in use of new trails proposed in the trail plan will negatively impact the conservation values as outlined. While it's understood it may be impossible to perfectly maintain baseline conditions over time, the proposed plan to build an additional 18 miles of new trail in an area that is already smothered in nearly 30 miles of unauthorized trails and authorized trails, informal roads, moves, I think it moves significantly the area further away from the effort to protect and conserve the baseline conditions for wildlife species and their habitat. We're also concerned with the overall mileage of trails that would be open in the natural area during the phases of implementation. Again, I wrote about this between Phases 1 and 2. There are going to be, my calculation shows only like 58 miles of open unofficial roads, trails, and new trails that would be open between Phase 1 and completion of Phase 3. That's a lot of trails. And I think if this area didn't have as many user trails, I think my concern would be a lot less. And I also think that my concern involves the actual closure of those trails and whether those will actually work. There is a lot of effort to build trails out there and to ignore where trails are. So setting this up might address some of that, but I still have concerns because I'm thinking it doesn't meet the conservation documentation. So I wanted to, do I have a little time? Okay, I wanted to talk about Pandora's Box, which was brought up by Mary Norton. I think that's a very important thing to consider. And I don't think a wildlife biologist has looked at this in terms of all the trails being open and what that means to impact wildlife and movement corridors. And again, will, how will we keep those user-created trails closed? Is this plan closing all of them? It didn't look like it to me. I think that would be a good thing. And how do we keep them closed? And is there funding for monitoring, for someone going out there every month and checking to make sure those user trails haven't been opened again or new ones haven't been created? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Lane and then Anthony Quintow.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ken Lane. I am a mountain biker, hiker, been doing those things in Flagstaff for 46 years now. I also own Absolute Bikes. And I just want to speak about e-bikes on trails. At Absolute Bikes, we've been selling e-bikes now for about a decade, and they started out a small part of the business. They are now over half of our sales. E-bikes are bikes. They are, most, all of what we sell are pedal-assist bikes. They're ridden just like bikes. People do go uphill faster, they generally don't go downhill faster. Anybody riding a bike should be courteous to other trail users, hopefully, always, whether they're on an e-bike or an old pedal-powered bike. Unfortunately, you can't control that, but you can certainly suggest it. And it's also really difficult to monitor what kind of bikes people are on. If you don't know what you're looking at, they all look the same. Currently, as was previously mentioned, there are 20,000 to 30,000 people using this area every year. I don't know what percentage are on bikes. Let's say half, let's say half of those are on e-bikes right now. So to change that is going to be difficult, and you're denying access to a lot of Flagstaff residents, because that's the way they want to recreate. Otherwise, I think the plan is great. It's a great urban interface. I don't like the term "sacrifice zone," but it is close to the city and it's not a wilderness. So, you know, if, certainly, people can coexist with wildlife and recreate. There's another million acres of national forest out there beyond that. So I think the plan is great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anthony and then Molly Joyce.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor and Council. I'm Anthony Quintilly with Flagstaff Biking Organization. I'm speaking on behalf of our organization and our constituents. This plan's been extremely heavily litigated, lowercase L, by the Coquenino National Forest Plan, Flagstaff Trails Initiative Strategy, and all the community input through that, Guiding State Land Exchange documents, many rounds of community input directly on this plan, specialists with Arizona Game and Fish Department, State Parks, United States Forest Service Managers, and the commission's input. We're not entirely pleased and feel that there are a lot of lost opportunities with that plan. However, we've been engaged in myriad public processes like this over more than two decades. And I understand from our experience that differing values must be acknowledged. Additionally, we want to make it clear that it has been proven repeatedly that well-managed trail systems are one of the best ways to protect landscapes. We're also concerned about environmental impacts, as anyone. Well-managed recreation is not at odds with protecting natural resources. We're committed to help to implement this plan as it is. But as far as we are concerned, compromises have already been made by both sides as much as is reasonable. So we encourage you to adopt the plan as it sits. Don't mess with it. The messing has been had, has had, has happened quite a bit. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Molly Joyce and then Quinn Travis.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Molly Joyce. I was appointed by you to be on the Open Spaces Commission, so thank you for giving me a voice to support my community. Full disclosure, I am a mountain biker. I spend almost every afternoon up on the Mesa. I'd like to express my personal excitement. I know there's been a lot of full-spectrum opinions voiced tonight, and I want to express my excitement for the plan that was proposed by my fellow commissioners and myself that has been recommended and is on the screen. I believe, as many others do, that this plan satisfies the complex needs and opinions of our community by making a well-researched and thought-out compromise to officially establish the Observatory Mesa network with an effort to include every user's needs: hikers, mountain bikers, commuters, runners, birders, adaptive mountain bikers, and even e-bikers. I hope you'll agree with the commission's recommendation as it reflects the needs of our community. I think it will improve access for youth, adults in the adjacent neighborhoods mentioned. I think it'll improve a lot of opportunities for mental and physical health for those people who live in our community who use it and some who don't know that there's trails there. There are a lot of people who I take up there for the first time. And by establishing a set of trails that are sanctioned, you'll invite more people who live here in our community and are entitled to its use because their money bought it to... to enjoy it and protect it. It has potential to grow Flagstaff's economic vitality, happy economic vitality week, by drawing more people into the downtown neighborhoods and to businesses in those adjacent neighborhoods. It'll also, yes, invite more people to Flagstaff that will use it, but that's BBB tax money that'll help us maintain everything else that that money sustains. Compared to the childcare and housing issues that have already been expressed tonight, I think this is a big part. This plan incorporates the needs of people who live in our community. I use the Mesa Trails, like I said, daily. Hot Pockets is one of my absolute favorite ones. I'd like to point out that that high density area on the south side that's been a point of contention that it's too busy, it's going to bring too many people there. BNSF Railroad is at the bottom of that hill. I think the birds and the deer are going to be more bothered by a railroad than by people. And I still see elk and deer and chipmunks and squirrels up there on a nightly basis. So I don't think that more bikers is going to be a problem. I think these trails, especially the ones most contentious, are valued by members of our community. By adopting this plan and the budgeted allotment from BBB tax, the Mesa will continue to be a central outdoor resource. And I guess that's all the time I have, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Molly. Quinn Travis and then Truman Schoeff.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. My name's Quinn Travis. I'm the Executive Director of Flagstaff Youth Riders. We are a nonprofit here in Flagstaff and our mission's to get more kids on mountain bikes. It's increasing mental health, getting kids off screens and outside. I think this plan is amazing. We run camps to over 1,000 kids here in Flagstaff, Arizona. Kids who have ridden bikes once, kids who ride bikes better than me. So we have a plethora of youth cycling. What this trail proposes is safety and equitable access to single track, which is more common now than ever in Flagstaff is we're seeing more and more youth not being able to get dropped off to trail heads by their parents. So now what they are doing is getting on their bikes and traveling on streets, on sidewalks, through the city limits to these single tracks. And I will say Flagstaff is amazing at providing accessible single track, but this plan proposes an easier access for youth because my biggest concern is the streets and these kids getting to trails. Once they're on trails, they're safe if they've got their helmet on. I have a few of, you know, my Flagstaff Youth Riders here today because they believe in the same thing that I'm speaking about to you guys as well. And we have an amazing amount of people here supporting this initiative. I think more trails is going to increase our economic value in Flagstaff. It brings people here. There's very, very few cities that kind of have the single track that we do for not only mountain bikers, but hikers, trail runners. That's why all the Olympians move here instead of anywhere else. And so that's all I have to say on that, on behalf of the youth in our community and mountain biking. Thank you.
Thank you. Truman Schoeff.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, everyone else here. My name is Truman Schoeff. I'm the Programs Director for High Country Adaptive Sports. We provide recreation for the people with disabilities in the form of skiing, mountain biking, rock climbing, kayaking and more. I had the pleasure of working with Bark and the Forest Service on getting some feedback from the disability community on the adaptive trails in this system and extending it more. I am not sure if it is still in the project that the trails were extended to 36 inches. And if that's still the case, that allows most of our riders and bikes to go on this entire system, including the adaptive portion of this trail. Anyone that's concerned about adaptive bikes and that stuff being on trails, I just want to speak and say that these trails do not take anything away from the experience. They just allow more people to use them. Adaptive trails allow children, kids to get on them more, you know, folks with disabilities and all that. And so it's, I'm really happy with this proposal and the work they've done to be inclusive. Just a little note on e-bikes. E-bikes allow older individuals and folks with invisible disabilities to get out and recreate. They're not going anywhere and they're even harder and harder to, for people to tell what it is. And they just allow more people to get out. They don't hurt trails and they're here to stay. And so I just urge this council, whoever is in charge of that, to start thinking about e-bikes being used because they're just allowing more people to recreate and I see them as a positive. I won't swear, but a-holes are a-holes no matter what they're on. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Morse. I think I'm going to put that on a bumper sticker.
My name's Corey Morse. I am an 18-year homeowner in Railroad Springs. I directly back the trail system. I am out there three to four times a week hiking. I've been to every single PROS meeting, public comment, and this trail is the best compromise, I think. I do think e-bikes are the future and I think you're going to see more and more requests for that. I myself am not great at biking, but I can get out there on an e-bike. So I'm super nervous, but I just wanted to say I love this plan.
Thank you. All right, we have some online comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our first commenter is going to be John Daly. John, you can go ahead and speak now.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the trail plan. Overall, I'm in support of the trail plan. I'm a regular user of the Mesa for trail running frequently with my dog and I will look forward to using it even more in the future. I support the plan's construction of new trails, the decommissioning of the spaghetti of existing trails and roads, and I support the plan's exclusion of the e-bikes from the trails. I have a little concern that I'll still be able to find solitude and see pronghorn after the plan has been built out. I do want to raise a point on the speed of government phrase that I believe Council Member Matthews used on an earlier topic, and that is that it really should not take four years to agree to do something good that a majority of the community wants. Undo consideration for literal NIMBY interests, delayed, obstructed and watered down this plan. And, you know, government should prioritize doing good things with all practical speed and public processes to do good things should not allow it to be hijacked the way this process has been. And while I support the approval of the plan as drafted, I do want to point out that this trail plan is an outlier in how little it contemplates bike specific trails or trail features, which makes it inconsistent with public lands management best practices. To give you an example, some peer cities in our region, Santa Fe and Durango have built out, you know, high density trail systems in city managed lands and the urban interface that account for multiple uses by building bike specific trails as a way to de-conflict trail usage. In our immediate neighborhood, that same philosophy of user specific trails was applied by the Coconino National Forest to the Mountain Hills and Dry Lake Hills Trail Buildout. And, you know, that process was the product of extensive environmental reviews and it resulted in hiker only trails, bidirectional trails and some downhill specific mountain bike trails that have jumps and banked corners and steep rocky faces and similar features like that. So with that background of what, you know, other trail processes are resulting in, you know, it seems apparent to me that this plan has already been heavily compromised from, you know, what we can consider to be best practices. So, you know, you've heard from other commentators that they're still not happy, but I encourage you to disregard those views and just, you know, approve the plan as drafted. You know, as other commentators have pointed out, it was the product of extensive compromise. And I think that's why nobody's really happy with it. So please approve it as drafted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next commenter will be Rick. Rick, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now. Rick, are you able to comment? Rick, go ahead and try one more time. Okay, Mayor, we seem to be having some technical difficulties. Rick, if you would like to email your comments to publiccomment@flagstaffaz.gov, the Mayor and Council-
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Rick, you can go ahead and offer- Rick, if you can unmute and offer your comments. Okay. Mayor, we'll go ahead and move on. I'll communicate with him in the chat.
Was that the last online commenter?
I apologize. Yes, it was the last online commenter.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for all of your really thoughtful comments. Appreciate it very much. Council Member Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to kick this off with our discourse up here. I want to start by thanking the public for its engagement, for sitting through this whole meeting with us. I hope you enjoyed the other presentations we had. It's always nice to see new faces in the audience. It's always nice to see other constituencies and groups in Flagstaff coming to City Hall and engaging in the process. I hope you believe in it. I hope you feel heard. I hope you feel like we're doing our best up here to find that middle ground, especially when things get controversial on either side. I want to applaud the work of Robert and his partners on this. You guys always go the extra mile in terms of public engagement, in terms of, you know, all the bells and whistles and it's nice that our public is so eager to engage. So there's a lot of data to collect there and a lot of data to sift through. Robert, you and all the other commission liaisons do such a wonderful job of managing all of that. You know, I personally utilize this area a lot. I mountain bike up there a lot. I've walked dogs up there. I really enjoyed my personal tour that I did with Robert. He gave that to me. We went under the train tracks. He gave me that tour right before his baby was going to be born, I think. So it was a while ago now and these conversations were happening all the way back then. And I think we're there. I support this compromise document. All the work that has gone into this is a lot and I don't feel personally entitled to micromanage the outcome any further at this stage. So consider that my direction. My support is all there with a couple little caveats here, which I'll get to. You know, I'm a little bit surprised by all this controversy. I think the vigorous debate is important and we've come to something that I think we can all live with, even if no one's happy about it. But at this stage, let's move forward. You know, frankly, it's just, I'm just really relieved and gratified that we're having this conversation and not one about building roads and housing developments and business and research parks up there. So just want to take stock of that enormous victory, that this is where the conversation's at and not somewhere where we're pulling our hair out wondering, how do we, how do we keep any of this even remotely natural? I'm fully in favor of e-bikes and I urge Council to agree with that. You know, I was on councils six years ago when we had these first conversations about should electronic bikes be allowed on the foot system? And it was an enervating conversation to me. I was, I found myself quite annoyed a lot of the time with some of the, 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 the old, I don't want to say that word, but some of the latent ways of thinking about how these machines work on our systems. Jerks are going to be jerks on anything they're on and it's really not the mode of transportation that brings that out in a person. And, you know, frankly, if we think about the economic potential and the economic driver that this Observatory Mesa is for the city of Flagstaff, that's a consideration that hasn't really been brought up before. But there's huge dollar amounts that go into this. We've been hearing from businesses, they're a part of the groups that are lobbying for the use up here and I think it just makes a lot of sense. I'm also fully in favor of adaptive trails on all the managed trails. All the officially identified trails should absolutely be accessible to and inclusive to anybody who requires those traditional standards that have been figured out by other people. But let's do that as our minimum. And, you know, just a couple other thoughts here. You know, I have a hard time imagining policing this whole thing. So therefore a light and sensible touch needs to be applied and people just have to be trusted to utilize this area in good faith. Sure, there'll be bad actors from time to time maybe, but we can't legislate to that least common denominator as the way we're thinking about all this stuff. And good behavior begets good behavior. I think if everyone's up there doing a good job and we have our agencies and our interest groups sort of providing the right example, this whole area is going to be respected and revered by everyone equally. You know, this isn't a wilderness area and I don't think we can expect our population here who spent a great deal of taxpayer money to secure all of these lands to just put it on a shelf. Again, we can't police it. We couldn't really control that anyway. I love wilderness. I highly, highly value wilderness. One of my favorite things to do in the world is stand up on a high point and do a 360 and not see one telephone pole. I through hiked the Arizona Trail a couple of years ago. It took me two and a half months. I did it by myself and those resources are absolutely critical to protect and preserve into the future, into perpetuity. That's, I don't think that's what we were ever going for with Observatory Mesa. And lastly, I just want to say I love the idea of not calling this a trail plan. I think that was Mary who said that. Yeah, let's name it something else. I think there's, I think there's value and wisdom in that, in that suggestion. Hope you guys will think through that a little bit more. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies to Council Member House that I neglected to come back to you after all of the public comment, so please.
It's okay. I forgive you, Mayor. First, I just want to say I have so much gratitude for everyone that spoke tonight and particularly I want to express gratitude to the Open Spaces Commission who has worked on this for three, really the past four years in putting their hearts and time into this plan. I want to call back to some of the comments that were made by some of the participants because I think that they were really important for the conversation. So I think it was Mr. Hoffman who said that this was a balanced plan with tensions. And I think that was a really important statement to me because that for me is the very definition of democracy and community. It's the work of finding that balance, finding those places of compromise while also acknowledging the tensions that exist there. Mr. Schoeff and the High Country Adaptive Sports team speaking to adaptive trails, I think was a really important point. It was actually one of the sets of questions that I had was about the accessibility and the ability of ADA compliance and utilization of trail spaces. So I really appreciated those comments. We just had a meeting a few weeks ago or maybe just a week ago. I don't know. I keep saying this time is meaningless to me anymore, but we had a meeting with the County Board of Supervisors about the regional plan. And one of the big conversations was about the importance of a sense of place. And I think that this plan is one that does offer a lot of opportunities and compromises within that conversation of place-based storytelling and the, the balance between the ecology of this area, the conservation and preservation of the area- of this area, the conservation and preservation of the area, and the public use, particularly in the two educational zones that are proposed. And I'm wondering, Robert, if maybe you can talk more about any of the plans to add, what types of programming, excuse me, and other place-based ecological knowledge might be factored into the educational zones?
Thank you, Councilmember. We just had an update, actually, to our Open Space Commission and our educational program. Ashley Flynn is heading up that program. And she's been doing a lot of great work moving that program forward. And what we're moving towards is trying to offer every third grader, every seventh grader, and every 10th grader an opportunity to do a field trip to one of our open spaces. She's been doing a lot of great work, and then we have summer programming on top of that, in addition to traveling schools that come to Flagstaff. And so these two educational zones will help us deliver those field trips for those targeted audiences, not only in the form of a trail, but also with interpretive signage, and then with a hands-on field trip with a staff member, hopefully, continued into the future. We also have toyed with the idea of providing some, like, natural-type landscapes to be able to engage with, not playgrounds for sense, like a traditional playground in a park, but strategically placed logs or rocks and that sort of thing to actually allow the students to have, like, an engaging experience in some of these little educational zones.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. I have a couple of other questions for you. So I'm wondering if you can share a little bit about the outreach to the tribal nations. So the plan, or the presentation that we received noted some of that outreach. And I'm wondering specifically if there were any concerns that were raised by tribal partners regarding trail locations or cultural resources?
Thanks. Yes, we did outreach throughout the public outreach portion, this plan to tribal nations. We did not have a lot of feedback, but the feedback that we did have was in support of the plan. So no concerns were brought forward through that process.
And then, I think my last question is just, if you can share anything more about how the ecological impacts in public use would be monitored or tracked over time, and how you've worked within the team coming up with the plan to balance those concerns about conservation, cultural preservation, and recreation?
We have a volunteer program called the Open Space Stewards. And so we rely very heavily on the community, not only for input for planning like this, but for everyday monitoring of our property. We have over 20 volunteers that volunteer throughout the year, and our program is set up to be more flexible. Rather than just having specific volunteer events, we allow volunteers to volunteer on our property on a time that works well for them, like after work. And we rely on them to do informal education, so answering questions. We outfit our volunteers with a t-shirt and a hat that has the insignia of the city on there. We also rely on them for doing small projects like cleanups, and we rely on them to do monitoring. The city has that new volunteer website. We use all of that for reporting and monitoring, and then we plan our management activities based on that feedback. We also work with the state's site steward program through the Arizona State Parks, and they help us monitor archaeological sites, primarily at Picture Canyon, where we have the most cultural resources of all of our natural resources. So we utilize this, and we do, going into the future, we hope to further grow that volunteer program to be able to create a presence on the property. I mean, in addition to that, we do actively work with the Flagstaff Police Department to enforce our rules and regulations. So if we have a concern, such as, like, illegal trail building that is going on, we will work with them to file their correct police report. So we do work with them for, like, larger issues like that.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. In the summertime, I walk, hike a lot in Observatory Mesa and Mars Hill. Yeah, e-bikes are kind of annoying when you have tourists that rent them, and they're kind of wild. It's just like sledding in the summertime when they come up, and, you know, they don't respect the land like we do. But I've also walked around Fort Tuthill, and the trails are narrower, and it's more dangerous. You almost get mowed over. So I agree that you can't, you know, one bad apple, you can't just change the whole concept just because there's a couple of people that have come up and are idiots, you know, on the trails with their e-bikes. I do see a lot of unauthorized trails that are being made. It's just a spider web. And I think that that does so much more, I know it does, so much more damage to our lands and preserving the wildlife habitat and stuff. And so I feel that this plan really helps address that and clean it up, which I like. I like that the Open Space Commission was very involved in this for the last couple of years. We lean on them to keep that, those priorities of what our community wants, the top of mind. And so it's good to hear their feedback, even with Mary having a little reservation. I appreciate her comments and her points of view on that. It's really helpful. I also heard earlier, before we started the meeting, just brought to mind that these trails now with Railroad Springs over to Thorpe Park is a connectivity for people that are biking or walking, a little safer than going down Route 66 and some of these street trails. So I think that there's definitely a lot of benefit to really going back to managing these trails, cleaning them up some. And also, I like the idea of the interpretive signage for educational purposes. I know when I go to Picture Canyon, I always am reading the signs and learning about that area, and that's such a benefit to the local community as well as the tourists. I didn't realize until earlier today that the city council, as Austin had mentioned, had already approved e-bikes to be on our trails. So that kind of took away some of my negative thoughts on combining those. And I read a lot of comments from the emails about violating the conservation land restrictions, but I'm going to trust that Robert and everybody that has worked on this is not fibbing. And if you go to the state for final approval, that would probably come up if we misread that. So I'm trusting that this falls well within our abilities to utilize that land. And we all like, not all of us, but those of us who are concerned about it, we all share that common ground, that we enjoy that open space and those trails. And so I'm supportive of this final plan, and I appreciate the years and months that it has taken to get to this point. I think it's a, it's a big compromise, and it really cleans up a lot of just trampled area that I've probably contributed to as well, when I've gotten a little off-trail and had to cut through. But I think this will be a much better trail system when it's all done. So thank you very much.
Please, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I am up on the mesa quite a bit, doing a lot of running. I haven't really ridden my bike up there, although I would. And I definitely see the value of having a balanced plan to help preserve the trails and preserve the mesa. And I really appreciate all of the public process that you all did. I didn't realize how in-depth this went until I did my research for tonight. And I do believe we've come up with a balanced plan. And without all of that process in the beginning, perhaps we wouldn't be here tonight with such a good plan in front of us. So I appreciate that. The restoration efforts and the enhanced connectivity, I think, is great. Managed recreation will ensure that the balance remains on the mesa. And I mentioned this earlier, I do wish that the restoration efforts could happen a little bit earlier in the various phases, but I understand, especially after the discussion earlier I had one-on-one, why it is slated for the extended timeline. Some things were brought up tonight that did make me pause, and I just want to list them off. We don't need to discuss them, but might be something to think about. The 515A trailhead being moved. The speaker, the first speaker of the night, mentioned that. And I can kind of picture what he's talking about, and something to think about. The environmental and wildlife impact. I know you have done your research, and I will trust that you're going to keep that in mind as we move forward. And not calling this a trail plan, I think that's a good idea, and thank you for bringing that up. And the e-bikes, you know, I rode my e-bike here today, so I am a proponent of them, and I am in favor of them as they are proposed in the plan. And my last thought, the adaptive portion of the trail system. I think that's wonderful, and I'm so glad that that's included. So thank you again for all of your hard work. I know this has been yours in the making, and I support the plan.
Councilmember Garcia?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple more questions for Robert or one of the presenters. Could you speak to me a little bit about mountain bike optimization? By definition, and also how it's going to affect these, this trail plan? Specifics or in general, however you want to go about it? Thank you.
I also attempt a mountain bike, but I'm not able to speak from an advanced rider's standpoint. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how trails optimized for mountain bikes are going to be, they're going to look a little bit different than the typical multi-use trails that you see. So imagine your dirt trail in the woods around Flagstaff on Forest Service land. These trails are going to be a little bit different in that they're going to be shaped. The angles of the trail itself laterally are going to be shaped to allow better traction for tires. The trail alignments are going to allow for good sightlines and the ability to maintain speed that is created by the trail alignment and the descent, the grade percent in descent that is given in this alignment. They are designed for downhill use. So folks in the downhill direction are going to be having more fun than the folks in the uphill direction. So you got to think enjoyment on a mountain bike, kind of the best-case scenario that you can get, you're thinking about side-to-side movement and vertical movement. And in the trail design process, you can consider that undulations and meanders. So incorporating those in a way that allows somebody on a bicycle to not have to lose speed quickly, change angles quickly, which is dangerous if you give people a lot of speed on a trail alignment and you turn it really hard to the left or right without giving them proper warning or proper angles to do so, is going to not only reduce their enjoyment, but it's going to be dangerous for that rider. Providing good sightlines is good for multidirectional trails. With folks coming uphill, that you'll be able to see each other in enough time for everybody to slow down and hopefully say hi and be respectful to everybody. But it does allow for more speed. Some mountain bikers really enjoy speed, and when you optimize a trail for mountain bikes, you lean into that a little bit, but it's going to be dependent on the terrain and the landscape that you have, how much elevation loss that you have between the top and the bottom of the trail, how much distance you have between that's going to dictate, you know, how appropriate speed is for any given alignment. Does that help?
That sure does. And what, the trails that will be optimized, two are proposed, correct, and one of them is already there?
There's actually four proposed alignments, three miles in total. And then, in addition to the existing trail that's referred to as Hot Pockets, that trail's about a half-mile long. So it's about three and a half miles in total of the 20 that are proposed.
Okay. And then, last question on the topic, is this optimization of mountain bike trails on par with the conservation easement?
From a physical standpoint, I believe so, yes. You're not going to impact or disturb any more earth than would be disturbed for a standard multi-use trail that is not being optimized for mountain bikes. That's going to be more on the social side of things, is I think that's a larger question. So from a physical standpoint, I do not believe so, no.
Okay. Well, thank you. That helps me quite a bit. I was concerned about the optimized mountain biking trails. And I say this from a mountain biker who has ridden mountain bike, well, who's ridden bikes on trails in Flagstaff since before there was mountain bikes. So I have a, I have an interesting relationship with the town and riding in it. From someone who rode dirt bikes to make some of the trails that we now maintain in Picture Canyon illegally, probably. We were kids, we didn't know. But now the city maintains them. So that speaks to, you know, when you, when, what the trails looked like back then in the unreserved areas like Picture Canyon, back then, it wasn't taken care of. We've come a long way by preserving these trails. And I could see, I spent a lot of time up on Mars Hill this last couple of weeks before, in preparation for this meeting, and it reminds me of the way those trails looked back then and what they look like now, which is really tailored and curtailed really well. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping for that for Mars Hill as well. And, yeah, I'm supportive of the plan because of those reasons. The thing that I would, that I'm a little bit different than my colleague, Councilmember Aslan, is the promotion of the plan. I really don't care if we make any money by selling this to tourists, honestly. I just don't. And I ask, I say that by asking this question, has anybody here ever been to Hellhole? Nobody has. And if I took you there, which I can, if you guys want, I can take anybody there. It's a beautiful cave on Mount Alden. And if anybody has, it's been the same since the first day I've been there, over 40 years ago. It's still in the same condition today because it's not advertised. It's not that it doesn't exist, it's that there's no, I promise you, if it did exist, there would be a parking lot designed just for that one amenity. And it would take away from it a lot. And that's the same that I feel about this area here. Since it is a natural preserve, and since the reason we're not having some of these discussions about putting houses on it or anything like that is because we took those steps, not to make a bike park, not to make a trail system, but to make a preserve. That's why we're lucky enough to be able to make the trails that we have on it now because of this discussion and all the hard work that's went into it. But personally, I don't want to see this marketed as anything more than a natural preserve with trails moving forward. That being said, I've been hovering over this topic since its inception a few, quite a few years back, and I recognize all the compromises that have been made from both sides, the mountain biking community and the folks that just want a nature preserve. And there's been some real, there's been a lot of compromise that has met in a middle ground. So you're not going to see everybody here happy about their portion of the plan, but in my opinion, that means that it was well thought out, and it gave everybody a little bit of what they want. So I really wanted to thank you and the team for all the hard work that you've done on that. And I support the plan as it exists, minus that marketing niche.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spence, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As your council liaison to the Open Space Commission, I want to say that I am very impressed with all of the work that the commissioners and the subcommittees of other citizens that have worked on this over the three or four, three or four years. So I assure you that the plan has been thoroughly vetted, as we've heard this evening. I support the plan as it's been presented. I support the plan as it's been presented. And I have a request that at each trailhead, that there be bike parking so that people who do take their bikes to get to the base of the mesa, if they choose to, can secure their bikes and hike to enjoy the area. So it's a, indeed, it's a compromise plan where not everybody's interest has been fully implemented. But it's a compromise for our community to go forward. So I fully support the plan. And I respect the Arizona Parks Agency that will have the final say-so on whether this plan meets the conservation easement requirements. And I trust that process. So thank you.
I just want to thank everyone once again for not only commenting tonight and sending emails, but all of the work that so many of you put into this plan. I'm particularly proud of this area. I mean, not that I created it, but I was with Friends of Flagstaff's Future when, and managed the campaigns, the PACs for three bonds that were on the ballot that year. And I'm just so grateful to everyone who had the forethought to put this on the ballot and to the voters for supporting this. One thing that I'm particularly happy about with this is the managed access and getting rid of some of the roads and just the access that is damaging to the area. And I have a question for you. And that is, when you consulted with Game and Fish, I saw that they were part of these discussions. Was it a wildlife biologist with Game and Fish?
It was an Arizona Game and Fish representative, not specifically a biologist, no.
Okay, so the comment that there was no wildlife biologist enlisted in this, is that correct?
I don't know, so you have to check the title of the gentleman that I directly work with. But Arizona Game and Fish did weigh in on concerns with wildlife, such as locality to springs. They did make the recommendation that they would like to see trails at least a quarter mile away from any springs or tanks. And so we do have that consideration in the plan. And then we did walk some specific alignments with that representative.
Great. Thank you very much. And just to wrap up, do you feel like you've received adequate feedback?
Yes, I believe so. I actually did write down a couple of questions. So if I could just address those. So there was quite a bit of chat about e-bikes and where we allow e-bikes and where we don't allow e-bikes. And so I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification to the council on that topic. I'm just going to flip forward in my slides here. So these are the designated roads that are currently in the mesa that we can allow e-bikes. So you can see 515 and 515A. And then the Fuchs Trail that comes up from Thorpe Park in Railroad Springs. And so when we talk about allowing e-bikes, the feedback that we got from the Arizona State Parks is that we can permit e-bikes, not on all of the alignments, but where motorized traffic was originally allowed prior to the purchase of the property and that deed of conservation encumbrance. And so when we talk about e-bikes, what we could share with the community where you can legally ride an e-bike would be this alignment here. So not all of the trails and not all of the roads. Some of the roads that we will be keeping are for admin purposes only and not open to motorized traffic based on the current language of the easement. So any questions on that? And then there was some questions about adaptive trails. So the adaptive routes that are specifically designed for adaptive bikes include the kind of turquoise highlighted areas. So there's a trail, you can take the Fuchs Trail, that is wide enough. Our adaptive trails are designed at 40-inch width. And then 5.25 and 5.25, or 5.2. All the trails that are highlighted with that turquoise color will specifically be designed at a 40-inch width. And then, of course, the roads that are in red, which we realize are not an ideal experience for the typical adaptive rider, will also accommodate an adaptive bike. Not all of the trails are proposed at this point to be adaptive. And we did that intentionally to allow different types of experience. The trails, for instance, in Section 13, coming down from 5.8 to 5.7, are proposed to be a 24-inch width to allow more of kind of that natural type feel for an optimized bike-type experience. So I just wanted to make sure that the way the plan is proposed, that we're good with the adaptive alignments that we have identified.
I was one of those who commented about this. And maybe I was a bit overzealous with the idea that all these trails should be that extra width. I understand why we don't necessarily want to do that for the specific user experience that mountain bikers get. And again, I kind of consider us done with this. So I don't want to, I don't want to open the box and start looking at all this. But just as we're moving along and amendments get made to this down the road, what I would like to see is some of these adaptive trails have more variety of start and stops. It'd be nice if someone could start on one trail and leave out through the top, just in terms of through commuting, if it were, not just recreational use, but from getting from point A to point B in a novel way. And just the equity of the experience being as open as possible to our users who don't have normal mobility is something that I value. And please keep considering that. But I'm not, I don't want to make the suggestion that we break out the colored pencils and start looking at this in more detail right now.
Thanks, Councilmember. Yeah, when we did look at adding adaptive trails, we did think about what loops could be potentially made. So we're not just making it out and back. And the Fuchs Trail does provide that kind of connectivity at this point. We think like some of those roads that we will be keeping for admin purposes will also provide that opportunity. Agreed. And then I got the feedback about coming up with an alternative name. So that's good. We'll put that in the plan. The comments about moving the trailhead off of A1 Mountain here, was there a specific interest in us examining this further? Or a recommendation the council has on that? And then I did hear a couple of council members talk about marketing. So our plan is for this trail area to be for the residents of Flagstaff. We have briefly spoken to Discover Flagstaff and kind of talked about the appropriateness of marketing this area for users outside of Flagstaff area. And where we're falling from the community feedback is that we are not planning to market this to kind of the greater community. So I just wanted to address that comment as well.
Everybody, actually, I just wanted to make a quick comment here. My guess is that Councilmember Garcia was confused about my position on this. I didn't actually ever advocate for marketing this. My only comment to that was that this is an economic driver for the city, but not that we should be, you know, pumping juice into that necessarily for outsiders. And my only comment really was contrary to that by saying that I think we should nix the trail, the word "trail" from the plan. So just to clarify that for you and to be consistent in case there was other confusion.
Thank you. You know, that said, our trailhead off of Old Route 66 near the Public Works facility, we do intend to like have that accommodate not only residents, but people from out of town as well. And we think like that's a really good location because folks won't have to be like driving through the neighborhoods, but can, you know, pull off of Route 66 and be able to access some trails right from that location. And then the last thing I wanted to share was that we will be back in June to provide you with a resolution for this. And we did make that decision for a resolution because of all the feedback that we got from the community. We want the community to know that like if we have any substantial changes in the future, that we'll be back here and won't be making staff changes on our own. And so hopefully that is heard well, loud and clear from the community.
Is that it? Robert Wallace, everyone. Nice work. All right, moving down to open call to the public. And I do not see any comment cards. Then informational items too from mayor, council, and city manager and future agenda item requests. I'm going to start with Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I do have a few things. I have asked our city clerk to add a future discussion on the allocation of council initiative funds. Yes, again. And this time it's to assist the Flagstaff Family Food Center. In 2024, the Flagstaff Family Food Center provided 484,000 meals to our community. They are on track to provide even more meals this year and need our assistance. So thank you, Stacy, in advance for putting that on there. I did do the Bike Week kickoff ride yesterday. I did it with Councilmember Spence and our city manager and was able to accept the BRIC Award on behalf of Adam Shimonie. Did I say that right? Anyway, celebrating Adam and all of his work and advocacy for multimodal transportation. It was a great moment. We videotaped it for him. Spectacular. And then Saturday, the Market of Dreams is doing a soft opening. They are located on Fourth behind Fratelli's. And I've been helping merchandise their retail portion of the market. And it'll be a huge honor to be there celebrating their soft opening. I hope you can all join me. That's what I have. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I was honored on Saturday to read the mental health proclamation at the Walk for Wellness at Buffalo Park in honor of mental and physical health, as well as kicking off the Flagstaff Train Day at the Flagstaff Visitor Center, which was a ton of fun. I learned a lot more about trains than I even expected going into that, but it was a lot of fun. On Saturday, this Saturday, May 17th, I'll be attending an event with Redemption Counseling Center that will focus on how our community can break down barriers to mental health care. And then on Monday, May 19th, just a reminder that that is the opening reception for the 2025-2026 Multicultural County Park Sculpture Exhibition at the Liz Archuleta Park.
Councilmember Spence.
Is this the time when we can do a fair request? Okay, I request that we have a future discussion of noise mitigation at Bushmaster Park Sports Complex, given the vote six to one to proceed with the Bushmaster Park Sports Courts, $2.1 million contract. That is going forward without noise mitigation from pickleball in specific. So that's my request, to do a future discussion of noise mitigation at the pickleball site.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, I don't think I was clear last Tuesday. I don't think I used the word "fair" item. So I want to just repeat that I'd like a fair to have a discussion on incentivizing builders, developers to bring us more missing middle or workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. Doing a lot of research, especially with the zoning and land use changes that we're looking at and the regional plan. I think it's really critical for us to continue to move forward to achieve both our carbon neutrality plan and our housing goals that we look very deeply into how can we ensure that we're bringing middle-market housing to our community to help the housing shortage that we have.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. Tomorrow, you can come and join me and the rest of the Flagstaff, whoever wants to show up, at Seacrest School at 4:00. We are on, let's see, the third day of Bike Week coming up tomorrow. So come down there for the Critical Mass Ride. Starts around 4:00 or 4:15. We'll have some discussion and some refreshments. Then we'll go for our little ride and come back for an ice cream social, as was mentioned earlier. It's tomorrow at Seacrest, 4:00 p.m. Come ride your bike.
Councilmember, nothing. Okay. I want to remind everyone that next Tuesday is National Rescue Dog Day. So I expect every, I expect everyone to adopt another dog. And that is all I have. City Manager.
Thank you for all the thoughtful discussions. Nothing further. Thanks.
We're adjourned.